Buenos and half a day. Todos Hamzu, many of God's blessings. This informational briefing and public hearing by the Committee on Human Resources, Hagatnia Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, Technology and Federal and Foreign Affairs is called to order. It is now five thirty-four. For the record, in accordance with five GCA Chapter Eight subsection eight one oh seven, public hearing notices were sent on Friday, August eighth, adhering to the five-day notice, and a second public hearing notice on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, forty-eight hours prior. In addition, this hearing was noticed on the legislature's website, which is www.gwamlegislature.com. I will note to, on the record, that if anyone wishes to give testimonies, they may be submitted by emailing Senator Munia Barnes at gwamlegislature.org, or you may hand-deliver it, any information or testimony, to our office at suite four-one-one, one thirty-four, West Solidad Avenue, Hagatnia, Guam, nine-six-nine, one-zero. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen and colleagues, we have the following: an informational briefing from the Government of Guam on fiscal year 2024 health insurance plan. Also on the agenda is Bill number one-five-four-dash-thirty-seven LS, as introduced by Vice Chair and Minority Leader Senator Frank Blas Jr. and Senator Christopher M. Duaneus, which is an act to extend the 2022-2023 Government of Guam Group Health Insurance Plan, DOA, HRDEB, RFP, GHI, two-three-dash-zero-zero-one, to September thirtieth, 2024. Joining me here this afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, are our senators present. I will introduce my vice chair, Senator Frank Blas, and in no particular order, I see Senator Telo Titegui, who's here, thank you very much, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Jesse Lohan, Senator Chris Duaneus, and Senator Duane Sniklis. I'd like to thank my colleagues for joining me. And before we proceed, ladies and gentlemen, with the discussion, I would like to provide some general rules of conduct for all who are in attendance. The conduct of this hearing shall be as follows: Those testifying will be recognized in the order of the sign-up sheets on the sign-in sheet, which is to my left, your right. Written testimonies may be read and submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with your written testimony for photocopying. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Lengthy testimonies, I ask, ladies and gentlemen, should be summarized to five minutes. Once you are done, please remain in the room for any questions by my colleagues. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted, and any violations of the general rules of conduct will result in removal from the hearing room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name for the record and where you're from. In the interest of time, I will give each member will be given five minutes, and if needed, we can always do a second round of questions to the panel, if that's necessary. I ask that my colleagues support this effort. Those who do not follow these rules of engagement will be removed from this public hearing room. With that being said, we will now move to the first item on the agenda, which is the informational briefing for the Government of Guam fiscal year 2024 health insurance plan. I'd like to do my opening statement before I call the panel up, and I want to say for the record, over the last few weeks, my office has been receiving multiple inquiries for our Government of Guam employees and retirees relative to how a self-insurance model would impact existing care with our established providers. I have been made aware of a few local providers who indicated that they will cease accepting Government of Guam employees and retirees under the proposed new self-insurance model. As the oversight chair on the committee overseeing Guam's health insurance plan, I believe, I personally believe, it is incumbent on us to hold this hearing so all of these concerns can be addressed. While I understand the need for our government to be fiscally prudent, I also understand that our community is unfortunately reliant on their health insurance plans. It is important to many of them that they maintain their care with their existing providers. I hope to not create another health crisis in our community from being underinsured. Moreover, in audits looking at our health insurance plan, claims are usually higher than premiums collected, where that liability may fall and is concerning to me. So I hope that the Department of Administration will be able to provide clarity on this issue on this health insurance plan for the next fiscal year. And before I turn this over to Director Ed Byrne and the TPA representatives, I will note for the record that I have a dozen questions, and I will ask the questions after the presentation from the panel, and then I will yield to my vice chair for his questions also. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, I will invite Mr. Edward Byrne, as well as the representatives from Select Care and Net Care to the table. And before they start, I also be remiss if I didn't mention that there are several folks in the audience that are here, like former Senator Francis Sontis, thank you very much for being here. Colleagues, we do have representatives from the Attorney General's Office. I understand Attorney Graham Bothan and Frank Gumatalta, Gary Gumatalta are here on behalf of the AGs, and they're here to listen also. We have our medical professionals from the community, and a lot of the vendors that are out there, they're here. So if anybody wishes to present oral testimony tonight, please do not hesitate to fill out that form on the desk where the legislative staff, our legislative staff is at, and we will be able to get you on accordingly. So I will now turn it to Director Ed Byrne to give remarks and talk a little about the fiscal year 2024 health insurance plan. So please come to the table. I think I also caught up Select Care and Net Care, if I'm not mistaken. And if the AGs wants to join us on the table, you're more than welcome to do so. If not, you can sit there if you want, and if you feel necessary to come up, you're more than welcome. Fair enough? So, if, if we may, it's just for protocol standard, I will ask the clerk to, or the Sergeant-at-Arms, I'm sorry, the Sergeant-at-Arms to do the, oh, the swearing in? It was at the request of our colleagues. I will go ahead and oblige to that, as it has been standard protocol for the last term. And anybody in the audience who would like to, who may be able to want to do testimony, you can stand up at this time.
Madam Chair, excuse me, excuse me, Madam Chair, this is not an oversight, it's an informational briefing.
I understand that, Senator Telo. Again, this is my informational hearing. It was at the request of several of my colleagues, and I will afford them, I will oblige to that. So this time, Sergeant-at-Arms, please proceed. Anyone else wishes to, to also support, please stand.
Under penalty of perjury, we all affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Madam Chair, you may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Byrne, go ahead and please state your name for the record and proceed where you're from.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. My name is Edward Byrne. I'm the Director of Administration. When I first came to the United States thirty-seven years ago with a British company buying a subsidiary in a suburb of Chicago, the first thing I had to deal with was medical insurance. It seems to be my good fortune to continue to deal with it right through today. The finances of the Government of Guam are much stronger than they were. It seems only sensible to use that strength in the best way possible to be as economic and provide the best benefits possible to the employees of the Government of Guam, who work very hard on behalf of the Government of Guam, and for the retirees who previously worked very hard for the Government of Guam. What is being proposed in our current proposal for a self-funded plan, which is permitted by statute, it's in section forty-three oh one A of the four GCA, we've not invented anything alien, we've not invented anything strange, we've just followed the law, and we've tried to come up with a plan which is economical and which provides the best benefits to employees and retirees. To employees and retirees, they should see no change. We have selected Select Care as our TPA. Select Care will carry out the administrative tasks. Select Care will pay providers, and it's my understanding, and this was one of the factors that we took into consideration when selecting this TPA, that they have a very good reputation for paying their providers on time. So I don't know why any provider should be concerned about this. I'm not aware of any issues that either Select Care or indeed the Government of Guam has any providers. I think the record that we've been paying Medicaid claims on time regularly every other week for the last two and a half years also stands as testimony to the understanding and the need of the government to make sure that medical dollars flow back into the, into the community. Our research shows that about a third of large employers have a self-funded plan. Such, such choice is an annual choice. It's the choice of the government for fiscal twenty-four. It may not be the choice of the government for fiscal twenty-six. It depends on circumstances. But I think everybody, either on this table or behind me, will easily testify to large increases in medical costs over the last five and six years. Most of these costs are outside our control, but we do our best to provide a plan which, as I said, blends economic benefits to the government with good health care to the employees. In taking this decision, we used our consulting actuaries. Milliman, who are the consulting actuaries, incidentally, also for the pension plan, we would have used them whether we went with a self-funded plan or if we went with a insured or partially insured plan. We follow their advice, their expert, they gave us very good advice. I, I see no reason to, you know, we, and I think those, I think there was a few members of our negotiating team here, they will also be able to support me when I say, a lot of work went into it. The negotiating team met very regularly, very frequently, and at great length in, in examining the proposals that came from the carriers which we, we solicited TPA bids from, and for the numbers that they actually supplied. We looked at their, their networks, we looked at the way they, they, they pay their providers because they weren't all the same, and a great deal of work resulted in the decision that was taken. This plan, right, is, is not, it's not, we didn't take it for no reason at all. We took it for the reasons that I explained before, and it was taken with due deliberation. I'm confident that, you know, actually, all of the bidders would be able to have been able TPAs, but obviously, in a solicitation and procurement process, not everyone can win. I will leave it to Mr. Campillo to explain his processes, but as I explained, and I, I want to be absolutely clear to senators that we are going to use their services. That's the whole point of having a TPA, is that we're not going to perform those services ourselves. We're not going to decide who to pay, who not to pay, how much to pay. We're going to use Select Care's network and follow their guidance, and their rules, and their processes. Senators, this, as I said, this is not arbitrary. This, this is well thought out. As far as employees are concerned, they will continue to see deductions from their, from, from their compensation. The Government of Guam pays about seventy percent of the cost of, of the health insurance. In this case, it will be the cost of the administration fees plus the expected claims. That's a fairly generous plan. We didn't alter that, we didn't alter the schedule of benefits, and we didn't alter the actual plans offered. We still have an HSA two thousand, we still have a PPO fifteen hundred, and we still have, and this is really important to us, an RSP retirement plan. As we go through this, we want to make sure that we maximize our return, so we're going to encourage as many retirees as possible to take advantage of the Medicare supplement payment, so that Medicare becomes primary for them and secondary for the plan. That saves a large amount of money, and I think most people know that the Medicare deductible is much lower than the fifteen hundred deductible. That's, that's something that we're continuing to do to save money, and thank you, senators, that appropriation is in the budget to, to fund the Medicare supplement. The, the, the costs that we expect are roughly, we expect claims to be roughly somewhere between a hundred and ten and a hundred and twenty million, and we expect the premiums to be somewhere between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and forty million. Just as a reminder, the plan covers all the employees of the Government of Guam, including autonomous agencies, with the exception of the judiciary who have chosen to opt out for their active employees. Retired judiciary members are part of the plan. I'd be happy to answer any further questions on this, but I look forward to a healthy discussion, and we want to make sure, Madam Vice Speaker, that any questions are answered and no questions are left unanswered.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne, for your presentation, and this time, I would open it to the panel members that are here, if anybody wants to have any opening statements. Mr. Campillo, Mr. Schnebel, Mr. Crisostamo?
Oh, yeah, just a brief statements, Senator. Thank you all, senators, for inviting us here today. Just a little background, the self-insurance law has been there for at least ten years, and even in the prior changes that were made in the thirty-second, thirty-third, and thirty-fifth legislature to the insurance law that was allowed. So there is enable, enabling a statute that allows for the self-insurance program. In regards to public transparency, this was published in local papers, and I understand it was also published in national publications, inviting individuals, and international publications, inviting companies to respond to the RFP. We understand that all four local insurance companies responded to the RFP and have gone to the process of negotiating. So in regards to public transparency, RFP was published. The Government of Guam has set up a team to negotiate with those that respond to the RFP, and the legislature actually has three members. The legislature has the largest contingent of members representing any agency on behalf of the Guam Legislature, which negotiated on behalf of your employees, and of course ensured that they were negotiating in goodwill and in the best possible manner for the employees, retirees, and the people of Guam. The Government of Guam conducted various studies. Luis Anelis, back in two thousand and seven, provided a study in regards to self-insurance. Milliman also provided a study for the retirement fund. Milliman was the consulting actuary and guided the Government of Guam through the process of having what to do to go to self-insurance. And the process of self-insurance is one that, based on what we understand, the government is going to charge premiums to employees, retirees, to the agencies, which are asking the senators to make that part of the budget. So it's not like there is an empty bucket. And I understand some of the concerns is what happens if the medical loss ratio is more than that bucket? Well, worst-case scenario is that the Government of Guam will do the same thing that they asked the insurance companies to do, and that is charge more premium the next year to be able to refill that bucket, you know? That's what they tell us when we negotiate. And the actuarial team that negotiated, that provided information to the Government of Guam and guided the Government of Guam is a well-known organization. Actuaries are not always right, you know? We've been in both sides of the coin, where we have lost one year and we have not lost the other year, you know? So actuaries are not perfect. They give you some guidance, but it's not a perfect, you know, it's, it's not perfect science yet. The Government of Guam also already self-insures in many areas. You self-insure for catastrophes, for typhoons, and then we ask, we hope that the good benefit of our beloved Uncle Sam comes through for us to rescue us. We self-insure the power, the transmission and the distribution of our power lines. The workmanship compensation program, we self-insure that. The personal inmate health insurance program is self-insured. The MIP, the hospital malpractice is self-insured. But the difference with this program is that at least it's a dedicated fund, that fund comes from the premiums that are paid by the employees and the retirees and the different agencies of the Government of Guam. We are happy that we were chosen to be the administrators. I think we had earned the designation of being an administrator that has customer service that is there for the members, and I tell you, we're not perfect because nobody's perfect, but I think we have a good course, a, a good record in what we do, and we look forward to service the Government of Guam employees and retirees. I understand that there is, we signed up for two different areas, for the hearing and for the bill, you know? So for the record, we opposed the bill if we needed to be in the record. Thank you, senators, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Campillo. Before I ask any of the other panel members to speak, I'd like to welcome Speaker Theresa Ly for being here this evening. Thank you very much. Mr. Schnebel and Mr. Crisostamo, would you like to say anything before I start the line of questioning? Mr. Byrne, you'd like to add on?
Yes, and I should be remiss in not mentioning that Net Care won the, the bid for to be the administration of the dental plan, and I don't want them to be left out, and certainly I invite Mr. Crisostamo to say anything that he wishes.
We're, we're under the radar, but thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Jerry Crisostamo, I'm the plan administrator for Net Care Life and Health Insurance Company, and we are a recent awardee for the self-insured dental program for FYI twenty-four. And the dental is, there's some dynamics in dental because this is the fourth year that the plan has gone self-funded. So there's some experience with the dental program that's, that's self-funded under the Government of Guam for the last three, at least for the last three years. Then you also have pharmacy for the second year. Our company has extensive experience with self-funding, self-insure. We, we self-insure, we serve as a third-party administrator for many of Guam's large employers for the last twenty-some years, and I've yet to have any of those employers go from fully insured to self-funded, back to fully insured. The Government of Guam, you know, only the Government of Guam can determine whether you're ready for self-funded or not, based on your financials and based on your numbers. You, you, you met the first litmus test. You have over twenty-some thousand lives. With that number, you're not a large group, you're a jumbo group. You have no business buying insurance. You need to self-insure like many, many large jumbo companies in the U.S. Over sixty-five percent of large employers in the U.S., hundred employees or more, are self-funded. A good example is my own company. We have two-hundred-and-thirty-six employees. We went from fully insured, first-dollar coverage for many, many years. We went from fully insured, first-dollar coverage for many, many years, with loss ratios anywhere from the 90s to 100% or more. We made the business decision to self-fund. First, we introduced what is called a high deductible consumer-driven health plan to prepare employees to begin taking charge of their health care, to have a say in their health care. And then we gradually moved to a self-funded. Today, we self-fund for the last seven years now. Five, the last five years, we did not raise premiums to our employees. We're able to sustain the medical loss ratios because the company is now in charge. So in your case, the government of Guam is now in the driver's seat. And I know the concern with providers and others are, what if the government of Guam doesn't have the funds to pay? Well, first of all, you have, I don't know if you have reinsurance for the catastrophic cases, and that's probably one of the reasons why. You have, you set up a special fund within the general fund to be able to protect yourselves. But large jumbo groups like the government of Guam should be self-insured. And, you know, Select Care handles the medical, we handle the dental. We only propose put a bid in for dental because our company is a small company, and we wanted the first taste of handling 20-some thousand lives of dental to be able to make it successful. But I have, I think every confident that the government of Guam will meet its obligations to its employees and retirees under this program. You're in charge and you determine what kind of plan, how do you want to cover, and what to fund. You're no longer buying the dictates of the insurance companies, but you're the, you're in the driver's seat, just like my clients that are self-funded today here in Guam, and many of them like that plan because they tell us as the administrator, what I want covered, how much do I want to pay for it? And it puts you in the driver's seat, it puts your employees in charge of their health care.
Thank you, Mr. Krasostamo and Mr. Schnebel. Are you just open to questions? Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and start with the line of questionings. I know that there may be a couple of the questions and inquiries that I had that may have been answered already, but with all due respect, just so that I have the continuity from my perspective and my committee, I may ask that question again, so please bear with me. First, I want to ask about the current model of self-insurance for dental and pharmaceuticals. What agency or department in the government handles the processing of dental and pharmaceutical premiums and claims? Is this all handled by the TPA? Please, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. At the moment, because of the split, it's actually handled by DOA, who takes the premium and has to split it into its elements. That won't be necessary under the fully self-funded plan.
Okay, thank you. Is there currently an account dedicated for the dental and pharmaceutical premiums? Are both premiums lumped together in one account?
They're in separate, that may just actually expand on what Mr. Krasostamo was saying. They're actually in separate funds. We treat them as special funds. In accounting terms, they're really internal service funds, but I know senators are more familiar with the term "special funds," so we treat them as special funds.
Thank you. What is the typical turnaround time for a claim to be remitted to the health providers? I know that's a loaded one, but...
Well, that is something for the administrators to respond to because we don't pay directly, the providers directly.
In previous audits, it's noted that claims of active employees are usually higher than premiums. It's the inverse for retirees. Is this a continuing trend up to this fiscal year? And if so, how do we cover the balance if claims exceed premiums?
It hasn't always been so, and it really depended upon how the premium was set in the first place. At one time, actually, the retirees' claims exceeded their premiums. But as I explained, we've made several efforts to reduce the amount of the retirees' claims. So it has, when we resolved the premium differential and we succeeded in getting more retirees to subscribe to the Medicare Supplement Plan, that helped restore the right ratio for retirees. The claims for active people varies. I mean, I think you might remember that during COVID, there were, actually, the claims are very low because hospitals and providers were dealing with COVID and not with other ailments. When COVID ended, there was a spike in claims, which actually went over a couple of insurance years. But we believe that it's normalizing now.
Okay, so then, on a month-to-month basis, how often do claims exceed premiums?
I really don't have that information. As, I think, as both the TPAs mentioned, that, you know, if you, if you underrecover or overrecover in one year, you have the opportunity to overrecover or underrecover in a different year. We never have run out of cash, if that's the question. We've always been able to meet the benefit demands because it comes straight out of our bank account to the TPA.
Okay. So then, maybe this next question would be then, year-to-date, what are the total premiums collected and how much were the total of claims? Do you have an answer for that one?
Well, remember that the medical insurance this year is still insured. So we collect the premiums, but those premiums go to pay, most of those premiums go to pay the medical insurance premiums. So I don't actually have all those numbers in my head. We can certainly provide them to you.
Please do. Thank you. In the event claims exceed premiums this fiscal year, where would that liability fall?
Well, it will fall, you're only talking about dental and pharmacy because, as I say, medical is still insured this year. It would fall on the government to pay those. I think, you know, if in prior years, and I've had this question during budget hearings as to whether there was enough cash and appropriations even to pay the medical premiums in past years. So we, so sometimes, and this is a kind of mirror image of what's going to happen, in some budget years, we've had to use the following year's appropriations to pay the previous year's medical premiums, especially for the retirees, as I say, when it was upside down like you just asked.
My next line of questioning for the panel is on the stop-loss insurance. And while being fiscally prudent is important to all of us, my major concern is creating a burden with this obligation. So my next question is, do we currently have a stop-loss insurance for dental and pharmaceutical self-insurance?
No, we don't.
Is there a stop-loss insurance built into the self-insurance for fiscal year, '24's medical insurance?
Yes, yes, I think there is. It's done on a conservative basis. In building up the premiums, the actuaries put in an estimated cost for the stop-loss insurance, but they didn't reduce the claims for the expected benefit that we would gain by having the loss stopped.
Okay.
Or capped.
Thank you for that. I, you know, I want to move on to understanding this fiscal year's '24 health insurance plan for the government of Guam. And with the medical claims probably larger than pharmaceutical and dental, would DOA need to set up a new division to handle self-insurance? Or is this all going to be the responsibility of the third-party administrator?
Well, the RFP set out the responsibilities of the third-party administrator, and those are the responsibilities that both the administrators will be able to provide for us. We do expect to need some additional support in the benefits division and in the accounting division. We think it no more than two and a half people, which will be funded like any other administrative fee out of the fund.
Okay, so then I'll move on. Can you explain what the network of health providers would look like through self-insurance? And will we be adopting the TPA's network? And then, who is responsible for establishing the GovGuam self-insurance network of health providers? So I know that's three in one, so any one of you can tap in.
The director has asked me to help him with that, you know. So the current network that we have for the government of Guam, fully insured program, will be the same network that we should have for the self-insurance program. So on October 1st, under the new self-insurance program, the same provider should be there. Okay? Now, we recognize that there are some providers that have voiced concerns in regards to the payment, and, for instance, I think one of them is Dr. Shea is here, has voiced some concern. We hope that those concerns will be alleviated, and we hope that he will be in the network. But other than that, we have checked with a significant part of our providers, and they have no voice, they have voiced no concerns with our ability to continue having them in our network.
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done here. I want to share that a health care provider publicly stated that they will no longer provide care for GovGuam workers through the self-insurance model. I want to ask, are you confident with the next fiscal year's health insurance plan maintaining a high-quality network of care providers? To you, Mr. Ed.
Well, as Mr. Campillo just said, you know, it's really Select Care's network that we're using. So as he just stated, I hope that will allay everyone's fears, which I'm not sure are well-founded in the first place, but I would encourage any provider to rethink a decision based upon having that information.
And Senator, to answer that question further, again, we pride ourselves to have probably the widest network of medical providers that we offer to the government of Guam, not only locally, but also Hawaii, California. You have, we have the United Healthcare Network with over 1.1 million providers, over 6,700 hospitals, providers in the Philippines, Taiwan, Korea, Japan, you know. So again, that we're working with our provider network, we've been communicating with them. We normally conduct a provider briefing in the month of October. We're looking at bringing that in September to make sure that we answer the questions that the providers may have and alleviate any concerns that they may have.
Senator, I might just add that the same thing for the dental. Netcare contracts with all the dental providers on island. We have dental providers in the Philippines and then in the U.S. mainland. So the contracts Netcare holds, the ID card is a Netcare card, so GovGuam members will have access to those providers as well.
Thank you for that. So I know this next question may be answered, but I'm just going to reiterate it for the listening audience and I'll pose it this way, so you guys can probably reiterate with the same answer. Off-island treatment is common in Guam. Would government and Guam employees still be able to get treatment at off-island clinics like St. Luke's and even Taiwan Adventist in Taiwan and even in the States at the national level for that matter?
If it's in the, I'd like both my colleagues here to confirm that, but if it's in the current network, yes, they will still be able to.
You're more than welcome to add.
Yeah, and again, Senator, as I said earlier, we have providers in the Philippines. St. Luke's is one of them, a very wide network in the Philippines that will continue. The providers in Taiwan will continue. The providers in Japan, in Korea, we're actually expanding the network in Korea. We just met with about five hospitals in Korea that should be coming to our network in October and November. And the network that we have in continental U.S. is second to none with, again, as I mentioned, over 1.1 million providers for United Healthcare, over 6,700 hospitals, and the directed contracted providers that we have in the Southern California area. That wouldn't change pharmaceutical. We have Optum, and Optum is our PBM, and they have all the network of pharmacy providers here in Guam, and they have thousands and thousands of pharmacies across the nation, CVS, Walgreens, and so that network will continue. The mail-order pharmacy will continue. And again, we just look forward to a seamless process between September 30 and October 1st.
Okay, so maybe on that same reiteration, phrasing it like this is, what would the process be for a government of Guam employee or a retiree to get the care in the neighboring countries? Will the TPA handle this or will it work through the government? So please...
And those are very good questions and clarifications because it's important that those that are viewing outside this hall realize that that process will not change. So for those of you who had our insurance, you realize that the process, we move quickly. The referrals come from the physicians, whether it is to the Philippines or to Hawaii. We process the referrals. We not only process the referrals, but we're like a medical travel agency because we help with the appointments outside of Guam, you know. With companies in the U.S., they don't go through the process of even making appointments for individuals outside. We go through that and we do it daily. As you know, we not only do that, but we also have saved lives by using an air ambulance, and we probably have the best logistics in that area, and we continue. That is a benefit that should continue by the government of Guam. So the process and the logistics of providing care outside of Guam should not change. In fact, we try to find ways to improve that process so it becomes less paperwork. We're trying to find some logistics to improve the process even as it is. And we believe that currently, we have one of the best processes in the island to send people outside of Guam. So that process will not change.
Thank you very much, Mr. Frank. At this time, again, thank you to Director Byrne and to the panel up here. If I have any further questions as the questioning goes on, I'll keep you posted, but I will turn it over to my vice chair, Senator Frank Blas, to ask his questions. And after him, I will yield to the speaker and then start the line of questionings for my colleagues who came in first, and I'll work that protocol. So at this time, Vice Chair Senator Blas, you may proceed.
Thank you much, Madam Chair. And gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. And, you know, I want to start my line of questioning basically, to be able to get to the '24 proposal, I need to discuss the history of what has just been happening. And I know that probably in just one of those areas, you know, Select Care with the TPA and Netcare, so Jerry, I don't mind if, you know, if you want to jump into the questions, it's fine. Mr. Byrne, with regard to, what is your standard in as far as your acceptable medical loss ratio for any of the programs?
Well, under the fully insured model, we had a, and this was actually set up some years ago, I think by the current public auditor, because it was noted that at the time, that insurance carriers were making excessive profits from the government of Guam. So a standard was set up where if they exceed a certain level, then they have to return the excess to the government. That certainly worked for a few years, but hasn't worked for a number of years now. And the system was set up to have a ceiling, I think it was 86%, 86% of the premiums would be the expected claim amount, with 14% set aside for administrative fees and profit.
And taxes.
And taxes, as Mr. Campillo reminds me. So if it exceeded, or if the 14% was exceeded, then that amount... So if it exceeded, or if the 14% was exceeded, then that amount was returned to the government. As I say, we haven't had anything back for the last few years. For the last year, for fiscal '22, Take Care actually did have a slight amount to return, and it's just over $45,000. I don't believe I've actually got it yet, but I'm looking forward to receiving that.
Okay, so, so you accepted it 86%? That's going to, the loss ratio for you, for GovGuam?
No, well, that was the amount where it, if it fell below that, it triggered a return. If it exceeded that, that was the, you know, the insurance company bore it.
But I'm asking for GovGuam now, because you've already got experience in as far as self-insurance for prescription drug and dental. What was the medical, what was the loss ratio that you accepted?
I'm sorry, Senator, could you repeat that?
What is the loss ratio that the Government of Guam has for its programs?
Well, as I say, it varied, but for a number of years, the goal was to give the carrier a 14% administrative and profit margin.
Okay, but you are now the insurer for at least two programs, right?
Yes, yes.
What is the loss ratio that you've accepted, that you've said that you're going to accept as the Government of Guam?
Well, you don't have a loss ratio for a self-insured program. I mean, you have a goal, and the goal was the same for 86%.
Do we have a pharmaceutical program that's self-insured?
We're in the middle of the first year, yes.
Okay, what's the loss ratio on that? What's the accepted loss ratio?
Well, we did, we, there was no loss ratio for that, because it's not medical. So we were expecting to break even on the pharmacy program.
Well, have you broken even?
We are expected to be roughly break even when we get all the, and the good advantage of a self-insured program is that the rebates come back to us. So when we get the rebates, we do expect to break even.
Okay, so, is it safe to say that you have been privy, or the information about what you brought in in premiums, and what you have paid out in claims on a monthly basis that you have, do you have knowledge of that?
We have it in our books, yes.
What, do you happen to have that information before presentation to this body?
I don't have it to presentation, no. Our expectation was, we were going to have $35 million in pharmacy premiums.
$35 million in pharmacy premiums?
Yes.
By the end of the fiscal year?
By the end of the fiscal year.
And what do you anticipate your loss, your claims?
You know, currently, conservatively, probably about $34 million.
Okay. You know, we are in receipt of information that it is an average of about 139%. Right now, year-to-date, your medical loss ratio is at 139%. Is that, are you familiar with that?
Well, I got some information yesterday. It appears to be somewhat incomplete information.
And where do you see the incomplete information?
And I didn't get a chance, because I got it late yesterday, I didn't get a chance to look at the pharmacy one, but I believe there was also a dental number on there.
Yeah.
And I was able to look at that. And I believe that it said that premiums, dental premiums are going to be something around $4 million, which is, I don't understand. I don't know where those numbers come from. I do have in front of me an extract from, these are actually a draft of the audited financial statements for fiscal '22.
Mm-hmm.
And it shows dental self-insured premiums of $7.2 million. So I'm not sure where those numbers come from. This isn't fully audited yet, so I can't, I've written "unaudited" on the top. But these are actually an extract from what will be in the audited financial statements.
Explain to me the process in as far as the premiums and the payouts currently, and then I'm going to ask you to then, the proposed. What is your process, very simple terms, so that people can understand this? You get the premiums from government employees and retirees, right? Where does that go? And you said it goes into a special fund account?
We get, with premiums derived from deductions from employees and retirees, compensation, plus, the government makes the bulk of the contribution out of their appropriations.
Okay.
That gets currently, and that also includes entities such as GPA and GWA who are insured but derive their revenues differently. But the process is the same for them. They remit currently their premiums to DOA, and DOA has to split them between the medical part, which we pay to the carrier, and the self-insured part that we put into the special funds.
Okay, and so, you have a special fund for, I'm just going to talk specifically, because we're talking current year. The, for the self-insured, you put it into a special account?
Yes, just as this financial statements demonstrate.
And so, how does that then get dispersed from the special account? How does it get from you to, in this case, SelectCare, you guys do the part of the pharmacy, I mean, the scripture?
No, the current administrators of the pharmacy benefit program and the dental program is Take Care, not us.
Not you guys?
No, we did it the year before, and the year before, we were getting a fund where we, and we charge for premiums. Well, we charge an administrative fee. We send the bill to the Government of Guam for that administrative fee, we get paid for that, and we run claims, we pay claims to the dentist, and we send an advisory to the Government of Guam as to the claims that were run, and we drew from an account provided by the Government of Guam. So it was simplistic, dentist didn't have any complaints, and you can basically call the Dental Society to verify on that, Senator.
Very simply put, the Government of Guam has had the claims, I mean, had their premiums, and then they remitted to you, they gave you the payments to make, to pay out to the providers.
No, it was put on the claim fund account. That's what it was done, yeah.
Right, but they had, they were the ones who were putting the money in there. The money wasn't coming, you directly from the?
Premiums were coming to us, and we were remitting to the Government of Guam for that account. Okay?
Back when you were?
When we had it, yes.
When you had it. Is that the same cases what's going on right now with Take Care?
No, it isn't. But it will be under the new plan.
So, under the new plan, Frank, I understand, SelectCare is going to get the premiums?
The Director just said that. We send the bills, get the premiums, put them into that.
No, no, he's just finishing saying, you are going to get the premiums.
Okay, that's exactly why I just repeated. So, I'm reading on the Director, on the technicality, so.
So you are going to get the premiums, right?
Yeah, there's no need to split it anymore, so the TPA will get the premiums.
Okay, and so, then who does?
And of course, the dental premiums will be separately remitted.
Okay, so you guys are going to be able to get the premiums and stuff. Then, who does the adjudication? Who's going to do the, who's going to determine whether or not the claim is going to be paid?
The administrators.
We will do the same claims process that we do today. On September 30, the same claim that is processed today, I'm sorry, on October 1, it will be processed in the same manner. The claims are sent to us, whether electronically or in paper. We evaluate the claims to make sure that they're valid, and we process those claims, process the payments to the providers, and draw from the fund that is created by the Government of Guam.
Okay, so, what's the difference between doing that and going into traditional health insurance wise?
Well, as the Director explained earlier, the Government of Guam technically, and as Ray, I mean, as Jerry said earlier, the Government of Guam has some savings. For instance, you're not charging the 5% GRT that currently the Government of Guam is paying, because that's part of the premium that is being charged to the Government of Guam. That's 5%. So 5% or whatever amount is some good savings to the Government of Guam, just on the GRT that will not be charged for the self-insured program.
You're being charged 5% GRT? I thought the AG said that you weren't a person.
The GRT is being charged, the GRT is being paid today on those premiums?
Yes, sir.
So you're a person for one thing, but not a person for another?
I think that's the role of all of us in government, Senator.
Yeah, because he made, he said he had an opinion that you weren't a person, so I don't understand why you're being charged the 5% GRT. Never mind that said. What is your, what is the TPA administrative fee, cost? What percentage of the?
It's an actual sum of money, Senator. I don't recall. I think it's in, I think it's in the letter. Would you excuse me one moment?
Sure.
It's on a per member per month basis.
It's in the letter that we sent to the Speaker this afternoon that summarizes the health insurance negotiations. It's for, no, it's up here, right? It's TPA 1. This would be the, yeah, it's this one, right? No, TPA fee. It's this one, right? TPA 1 is the, is this one. It's in the letter, Senator. $21.75 for medical, $4.50 for pharmacy. That's a PPM. That's per member, per month.
So it's a set rate as opposed to a percentage? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm going to stick, because then I'll ask, in my second round, I'll ask about the current year's program. With regards to your pharmaceutical, your prescription drug, and your dental plan, did the Government of Guam issue a summary of benefits to its employees and to the retirees?
For the current year or for the new year?
Current year.
The current year, yes, it was on the, because it was administered by Take Care, both medical and pharmacy, it's on the Take Care website, is a Government of Guam section.
But it was your responsibility, did you, did the Government of Guam provide the government employees and the retirees a summary of benefits?
I'm not really sure what you mean, but as I say, we, in open enrollment, the summary of benefits was there. In fact, we had a discussion about Take Care, about who were initially reluctant to put it on their website, because these things can change. But we prevailed upon them, and we told all the members that they could view it on their website. We didn't provide a hard copy to everybody, because it's on the website, and that's current practice.
No, no, because current practice, I was getting my summary of benefits when I, I'm under SelectCare, and I got my summary of benefits from them.
One second, Senator, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just making reference that I got my summary of benefits from you guys last year. But I'm talking about the, for the prescription drug and for the dental, the summary of benefits document.
Well, for Take Care subscribers, they get it from Take Care.
Yeah, but for Take Care, there's subscribers, they got it, but what about for SelectCare? What about those individuals that would have to come over from SelectCare?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
About a uniform glossary of terms for the benefits. Did you provide that to your, to the employees and to the retirees?
It's in the summary of benefits, Senator.
It's in the summary of benefits, which was on the website, which you expected other people, then retirees, to go on a website to be able to provide, to get it.
I think we also, if they ask for it.
I anticipate that this is the same question I'm going to ask you for the next years, for next fiscal years.
I really don't recall what happened next year. I will ask my benefits supervisor here.
Senator, let me just add that typically, under the self-funded plans, you're the plan sponsor. You contract with the insurance company that serves as a third-party administrator, in our case, that's us. So the delegation of the issuance of what is called a summary of plan description is our responsibility under ERISA, because under self-funded, you're regulated by the US Department of Labor under ERISA. But we have that responsibility as a TPA to issue a summary of plan description on your behalf as a plan sponsor to your subscribers. And I think that's what has occurred for dental and.
I can confirm that the summary of benefits was distributed in a brochure at open enrollment.
Okay, well, you know, I've only got 14 more seconds, so I'm gonna, because I've got a five-minute limit on this one, so I'll go ahead and reserve my questions for the second round, okay? But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Minority Leader, and as noted earlier, I will give each of my colleagues five minutes. If they'd like to use their time, they're more than welcome, and if we have to go through a second round, I will afford them that opportunity, but thank the panel members for still being here. Speaker Chirlahey, I will address you at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of you present today, especially the panel. So just today, we received a letter from the Department of Administration. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to read it while we're having this hearing, and it pretty much outlines the health negotiations for the fiscal year. And it says that there was a recommendation made for non-exclusive? And is this the latest status of what's going on with this self-insurance? Or is there more? Because the governor also had a press release, but I haven't seen any memo from the governor.
Yes, I can answer your questions, Senator. The panel met and deliberated, and it was kind of conflicted between the two arms of the statute that say you can have an exclusive TPA for a self-insured plan, but you have to have optional, or at least two, actually, it says three, but at least two, because we only had two bidders last year, two providers for a fully insured plan. We sought clarification from the Attorney General on this, and there were a number of discussions with the Attorney General that were kind of inconclusive. So we made, the negotiating team made the recommendation to the governor that it should be a non-exclusive plan under the second part of the law. But the governor determined in consultation with her own counsel that it should be exclusive under 4301A.
And so that's the final decision, is exclusive?
The governor has the final decision.
And has that been made?
Yes.
All right, then, okay, and that, so her counsel differed from your counsel at the time?
Well, yes, I'm not really privy to exactly what her counsel said to her, but that's my understanding.
All right, so it was testified earlier that there would be savings, the government saves the BPT. So is that estimated that, you think our BPT projection should be amended in the budget by $6 million?
I really don't think that it's that sensitive to the whole thing, and I, you know, the OFB, I believe, was aware that we were going to explore, in fact, we were fairway down the self-insured path when they formulated their revenue projections. So I believe, although I can't confirm, but I believe they factored that in.
All right, so has, is there a contract now with SelectCare?
We have a draft contract. Have you received the draft contract?
All right, there was a sample contract in the RFP.
Yes.
Is that the contract that will be used? Or are there changes?
That will be the contract that will be, or has been submitted to SelectCare.
Are there changes, or not?
Not that I'm aware of at this moment.
All right, and then there was a requirement in the RFP for errors and omissions insurance, is that going to be provided or obtained by SelectCare?
We currently have that, Senator, as our standard business operations, not only for GOGAM, but also for our commercial business.
So that protects the government against negligence or lack of diligence or fraud, is that correct? Will that protect us in this case?
Well, that will protect us against any errors and omissions that, as Cabos Insurance, we don't have the governor, the government as an insurer party of that policy, is Cabos, Select Care, yeah, Cabos Insurance.
But Mr. Byrne, the requirement in your RFP was to protect the government, correct?
Well, it was designed to make sure that, that the, the provider remained solvent because it had that protection for them. I mean, the last thing we want, obviously, is to contract with somebody who doesn't remain solvent.
And furthermore, Senator, yes, technically correct, protects the government because if you sue us for any errors and omissions, then it will, that theoretically identi, will indemnify the government on that case, yeah.
All right, the sample contract in the RFP looks like a, the one for the fully insured health insurance contracts. It doesn't really have provisions for self-insurance or the third-party administrator, so are those being attached or written separately, or how can we see those things?
Well, I'm not really sure, we will, I'll certainly take a look, and I'm not really sure what you're referring to, but the RFP that we issued was for a third-party administrator.
That's correct, but the, but the contract and maybe the details of how it will be administered are, are not in there.
Okay, thank you, we'll, we'll take a look.
Yeah, so if I could get a copy, if you have one. So it was kind of talked about earlier, but who will have the responsibility of making determination as to what claims will be paid?
The administrators.
Select Care.
Well, and...
And the dental.
Oh, for the different, yes, okay, all right. And then what if, will, will you, Mr. Byrne, as the director, or will the governor be able to overwrite those decisions?
Yes, in theory, well, and by way of illustration, there were a couple of occasions when we had ETNA insuring us where we were faced with having to send a patient off island very, very quickly, which involved the use of a charter medical airplane service. And although it wasn't in the, in the contract, we agreed to do that, but it was only, it only happened on two occasions in two years.
All right, well, how do we, how will we ensure under this new system that all the employees will be treated fairly and equally and that it won't be such, you know, special, go to the governor, get special accommodations?
I'm, I'm not going to see any of these, you know, the claim details, we're just going to see monetary amounts, unless, of course, a, a, a particular patient raises an issue either with, with, with us, with, or possibly with you, we'll obviously take a look at it if that happens, but I don't believe, other than the two instances I just mentioned, it's, it's ever happened.
All right, well, perhaps you could put in writing for us and all of the public to be assured how that process will run exactly, if they want to, for example, appeal from the insurance company to you or the governor, yes?
So, so if I made a speaker, we actually were going to send them to the speaker, I'm just kidding, but in theory, for instance, same way how the federal government works, if there is an appeal and ultimately the, the, the TPA says no to that person that is appealing, ultimately, that person can go to the government and do a final appeal, same way how in the federal government, that person goes to the Office of Personal Management and do the final appeal, and if the government says you got to overturn that decision, the government is the insurance company now, we will overturn that decision and adjudicate accordingly. We hope we don't get to that point because clearly there will be, something is stressful to the member, we will adjudicate claims in the same way how we adjudicate them today. We have, again, not only the judiciary, but the federal government and our commercial groups, we run, report, we, we actually run surveys on a quarterly basis, and our surveys indicate that our members have a high degree of satisfaction with the way we adjudicate claims and the way we come back to them, the way we handle appeals and processes, you know, so, but ultimately, the government could make us overturn a decision on a claim.
Thank you, that's the reason why I would just ask, Mr. Byrne, if, yeah, maybe look at those federal procedures and, and institute those as a matter of, of the rules that we're going to go forward with.
Yes, thank you, we will do that.
Actually, they are because the ACA has standard procedures that we need to follow for when appeals, a processes, you know, so we got to follow those processes as well.
Okay, great, all right, I just wanted to be fair for all the employees, I just don't want to hear about favoritism or anything like that, thank you. And then you'd said earlier tonight that there will be no changes to retirees or employees, do you mean that they will be paying the same rates? Or are you just saying coverage is the same?
Are you, which, which particular comment were you referring to?
You, you, well, well, let me just ask you about the rates, are the rates going to be the same for the employees?
No, they're not. The, generally speaking, those who had, were insured under Take Care in, in this, in this current year will see a slight increase. Those who were insured on Select Care will see a decrease.
A decrease?
A decrease, yes.
So all the employees, which is the bulk of employees who are on Take Care in the current fiscal year, are going to see an increase in premium?
A slight increase, yes.
And so in the press release that the administration released, it said, quote, "Employees can expect lower premiums than with a private insurance carrier once reserves are built up," unquote, so that's, that's not going to happen until reserves are built up, and so are we paying as, for those reserves, or are you going to fund the reserves from Typhoon reimbursement or some other source?
Well, generally with a self-insured plan, and I'll ask my two colleagues here to comment on that, generally with a self-insured plan, claims lag premiums, so you collect the premiums before claims come in, because most of the claims that will come in in October will be fiscal twenty-two claims, not fiscal twenty-three claims, so there's usually an opening cash flow advantage, but we will make sure there's enough funding in there to, to match the, the claim requirement.
Right, but the funding is going to come from, is it coming from our premiums, or is it going to be, can we reduce our premiums because you, you're taking out the BPT? Can we reduce our premiums by putting some other reserve funding in there?
Well, unfortunately, as I mentioned, medical costs increase. As a rough guide, Speaker, there's, there's an increase generally in total, in total premiums, it's uneven, as I explained, of about five percent. Had we not entered into this particular arrangement because of medical cost increases, we estimate it'd be more, more like fourteen or fifteen percent.
That our premiums would have been raised fourteen, fifteen percent, you're saying?
Yes, yes.
So a five percent increase, we should just be happy. I'm just worried, because I think people are very sensitive right now to these premiums, they're, they, I hear of it all the time, that, that's a big issue for them, and they, I think they're going to think very hard whether they want those deductions from their pay.
Yes, I'm, I'm very well aware of the, of the concern, as, but as I said, the government of Guam actually bears roughly seventy percent of the premiums, so the employee bears like thirty percent. Many people have large families, and that means they're paying premiums at the highest level because they have large families, and I know it's, you know, it's a large amount deducted from people's pay, but that's unfortunately true, you know, I, yeah, right across the United States, and certainly, you know, when I was dealing with this issue in California, you know, California medical costs are pretty, pretty high, it was a concern, and especially for people that are low-wage earners.
Well, I just, I just want it to be that if we are saving money as a government by going self-insurance, that, that the, that the employees themselves and their families also can feel that themselves, that they are going to also save money, and so that the burden of this, what was it called, the reserves that build up in your, that, that that is not put back on them, because then they're not going to be, you know, that, that's really going to make them hesitate, that they're not going to be the beneficiaries, it's the government that will be the big beneficiary, but can we share that with them? Isn't there any funding source that we can build that reserves with? For example, the excess funds or Typhoon reimbursement or any other funds that might come in that we could share that burden?
Well, with all...
Because otherwise, you're asking them to pay a little bit more to build up your reserves, right?
Yes, I'm sandwiched between two insurance carriers here, so I'm going to be careful what I say, but it's better that the reserves are built up in the government of Guam than in a third party, right?
Sure.
And that's, that's part of, of, of the goal.
Yes, I agree, we want reserves. I'm not saying we don't want reserves, I'm just saying who's going to be bearing the burden of that.
We have to have a solvent fund, so we, you know, we don't want to take risks with the fund by reducing premiums below the point where they can pay for the, for the claims as they arise, and, and we think we struck that balance.
Well, I think, I don't think you've announced to the current rate payers that the bulk of them, their rates are going to be going up.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, I will allow you for a second round, thank you. At this time, Senator Jesse Lohan.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair, thank you, panel. You know, I'm getting a bunch of texts here, and folks are texting in, and they don't understand exactly what has been talked about, so I'm, I'm going to ask questions here based on their needs, their, their medical needs and, and what's, their, their concerns at this point. Mr. Byrne, you had said that the folks that are currently insured with Take Care, that you'll, they'll see a, a slight increase approximately, percentage-wise, just approximately?
I, I, from memory, Senator, and I'll ask Ms. Candace over behind me, either to confirm or deny it, from memory, it's generally around about three to five percent.
Okay, and the decrease, you said on, folks who are currently insured with Select Care, that you'll see a decrease, again, percentage-wise?
I think it's higher than that, but I'll ask Ms. Candace to, and I'll advise you when...
Now, enrollment period will be just around the corner, basically.
Yes.
Now, I, I remember when GOGAM went to a single provider years back, a few years back, ETNA, I think it was, that people had to enroll as well, I mean, even if you were, I mean, you had to enroll, so enrollment period will entail everybody enrolling, whether you're, you're Select Care, you'll have to re-enroll, or, or would just roll over?
No, we're trying to minimize the amount of intervention that individuals have to make, so we're trying to roll over people, but we will advise them, and we hope that we can use, you know, in the past, the legislature has been gracious enough to allow us to use these premises to have informational presentations on that. We will advise people that at that point is their opportunity to change their plan if they have a change in the number of family members, or they wish to move from a, an HSA to a PPO or vice versa. We only have, they only have one opportunity during the course of the year, this is it, so we don't want people to lose that opportunity.
Okay, so when you, when you say an opportunity for a rollover, rollover from folks who are currently enrolled in Select Care?
From the current enrollment, yeah, from both, yes.
Okay, okay, so hopefully it'd be, yeah, okay. Now, likewise, in regards to enrollment, there, you're, you're going to have some patients that may be caught, I mean, in, as the change happens, they're going to be up in a, in a hospital bed somewhere and won't be able to, to enroll just, just because of maybe their situation? What will happen to them? Would you, would they be automatically be funneled into whatever, if they were Take Care or, or, or Select Care, would they automatically, I mean, they won't be lost without insurance, right?
Well, if they're insured with us, it will be an easy transition. We are working with the Department of Administration on logistics to make the transition from the other carrier to us easier. We, local hospitals, we will ask the local hospitals to inform of anybody who, who is with the other carrier, inform us, and we'll be able to transition that individual. Hospitals like St. Luke's in the Philippines, we also get our staff there to try to go through the hospital and inform anybody from Guam about the changes, and we hope to get cooperation, of course, from Take Care on the transition, so we can get any of those individuals who may be in Hawaii or the mainland U.S. getting care that we can transfer to the self-insurance program as quick and as seamless as possible.
Okay, for those folks, again, currently insured with Select Care, they would continue to have access to the network, your, your network, right?
Anybody not only insured with us today, but also the new population that will come in?
Okay.
Will have access to the network of providers in Guam, the Philippines, Taiwan?
Okay.
Korea, Hawaii, the continental U.S.
For those folks who are not currently insured with Select Care and, and are with, with Take Care, and do you guys have the same networks then? That you, that you can, it's an easy transition, or, or if they're, if they happen to be outside of your, your network, and they're held up in a hospital bed somewhere and, and all that, how, how would that work out for patients who, who are not within your network but with, say, Take Care's network?
Well, so we're hoping that if, if anyone is in the continental U.S., that we get that information from Take Care, or at least the family, we still need to have public announcements, the Department of Administration will make public announcements, we will do outreach, so if family members know of an individual that is somewhere in a hospital in Missouri or somewhere in, in Kansas, hopefully, they're part of the sixty-seven hundred hospitals that United Healthcare provides, and if they're not, we try to see and work with the family to enroll the individual, and we also try to see how we can reach the hospital to have continuity of a contract and continuity of payment, and worst-case scenario, moving the individual to a hospital that will be a United Healthcare, but there will be a transition, no different than with the prescription drugs, drugs that may not be in, in our formulary that are in Take Care formularies, there will be a ninety-day transition. Optum has a very extensive formulary, we don't expect that, we actually, part of the RFP asks for a disruption. What are the disruption, disruption of pharmacies, what are the disruption of providers, what is the disruption of pharmaceuticals, and the analysis didn't show a lot of disruption between the current network that, that Take Care has and the network that they are going to be able to get with our network providers.
Okay, so, so right now, I mean, folks who, again, who are insured with your, your network versus the, the, I guess, maybe opposing network, like if they were, you know, on an annual basis, people go to get their annual fiscals and, and things like that, you, you, would they go to you, or would they go to the government again to get clearance, to be able to get these, these things, their, their annual fiscals or, or to get their off-island referrals, who, who would they go to? Would they go to the government for this, or would they go to, to Select Care or dental being done somewhere else, will go to Net Care?
Senator, you don't need permission to get an annual physical from us, you know, you just go to our network medical providers?
Oh, okay.
And, and, and get the annual physical. We coordinate for annual fiscals if you're going outside of Guam, but it's not getting permission, it's coordinating.
Okay.
Exactly, yeah, so, but if you go to the SDA clinic to get your annual physical today, you will be able to go to the SDA clinic after October first and get the annual physical in the same manner how you get it today.
So like claims dispute and claims, I mean, you're getting letters from, say, an off-island hospital, and there's a, as a claim dispute, they, they'll go to the administrator?
Correct, so the, and... So the, and, and we went over this earlier with, uh, with the speaker, and that is if an individual or a provider has a claims dispute, they come to us and there is a claim dispute resolution. And we hope to handle that in a manner how we currently do it. It, it is addressed in the manner for the provider or for the member. So, yeah, all claims dispute resolutions will come through us. But as we said earlier, ultimately, the government of Guam could overturn a decision that we made because the government of Guam is the ultimate, the ultimate insurance company in the self-insurance program.
Is the government of Guam?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I mean, we've heard, again, there are some, um, medical providers and, uh, clinics that had said that, uh, they, they're, they're seriously looking at not, you know, honoring or taking new patients when this new plan comes up. How do you, there, there, there are fears and anxieties about this because I think you can under, understand the anxieties of, of folks and not, I don't think it's attributed to the insurance companies. I think it's, it's, I think the history of, of the government and, and their payments and things of that nature. I think that's what's causing the, the anxiety of not just folks who are insured, but also medical providers.
So Senator, we, first of all, we cannot ignore the providers' concerns. We got to address them, right? Uh, and, but there is, there is a fund that is established by the government of Guam. We have been able to be one of the companies that paid, that pays providers in a timely manner and we don't foresee problems like that in the future. We definitely, those concerns will be alleviated as we go through the process. Uh, we handled the dental plan, uh, two years ago. Uh, we didn't have a single complaint from the dental community, so we hope that we don't have any complaints for the medical community. Now, is this a perfect, uh, is this always perfect? No. Even today, on a fully insured, you have some disputes. Uh, this, uh, the, the medical business is somewhat, uh, we, it has been complicated by thousands and thousands and thousands of codes that need to be coded, you know? So even today, there are some disputes. Now, with our company, the disputes are very minimal and we hope to continue to be that way when we become the TPA to the government of Guam.
Well, one of the things that I asked the other day, actually, with, or, yeah, the other day with, um, the hospital administrator in Pasada, so I said, you know, if, if quite a few of the clinics or doctors would not accept new patients, be prepared for Guam Memorial Hospital to, to be the primary care of, of, of patients if, if no, if, again, clinics and/or medical providers do not accept, would not accept GovGuam's.
So Senator Lohan, we, we have reached out to our providers and to many of them.
Okay.
And a significant part of them have indicated to us that they won't have any problems accepting members of the government of Guam, same way how they accept today, you know? So again, uh, we are not saying ignore the providers' concerns. They got concerns and they got to make sure that they, their concerns are addressed and alleviated. And we hope to continue the process of discussing this with them. We have a provider briefing coming up and we hope that to address every concern that they may have in the future.
Yeah, no, like I said, I, I don't think the anxiety is coming from the administrators of, of the, of the plan. I think it's coming mostly that who's going to be paying this? And if it is, if actually the insurer is actually GovGuam.
Yeah.
Leche.
And, and Senator, like I said earlier, the government of Guam self-insures in many areas.
Sure.
I mean, like, look, we self-insure typhoons and we relied in the good faith of Uncle Sam to come and rescue us. That alone is a big thing. Look what, what is going on with the distribution and, and power pitch. Senator Santos reminded me that, that he thought I misspoke, that is currently self-insured. We were lucky that this time around, we didn't have many, many of the distribution lines down, but that is self-insured by the government of Guam. The liability from the hospital, the malpractice, that's self-insured by the government of Guam. Uh, we think that we have, uh, a bill of $200,000 limit, but that can be penetrated if you went to federal courts, you know? So there is many areas where the government of Guam is self-insured and probably with more exposure than this because this, you get premiums, the premiums are allocated. You got a consulting firm that tells and advises the government of Guam, the same way how we have an actuarial firm that says, these are the premiums that you need to charge to be able to meet your obligations in claims. Same way the government of Guam had that actuarial film from Milliman advising the government, this is what you need to charge the government of Guam, employees, retirees, and yourselves to pay for the potential claims that you may have. Now, earlier, for instance, Senator Blas asked, what is the permissible loss ratio that you should have in GovGuam? And my answer to that is 100%, including your administrative fees because you're not in the business of making money. So theoretically, 100% would be an acceptable loss ratio for the government of Guam. Can that go above that? Yes. Can it go below that? Yes. Actuarial science is not a science that is, uh, correct all the time, you know? Companies miss up and down. Companies were not expected to have a typhoon of the magnitude that we had and the accumulated earnings that companies having won for the last 20 years have been lost in one year and possibly most, more. So.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's not a concrete science.
One last question. With Guam's high rate of diabetes and hypertension and all that, are the wellness programs still in place or would the wellness programs still?
The government of Guam has asked us to keep the wellness programs and that's very important. We have a population that continues to, uh, deteriorate in many ways, you know? So those wellness programs will continue. Thank you.
Correct. Director? Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Chris Duñez, you're recognized.
Jesus, ma'am, Madam Chair, and a lot of the questions have been answered, so I'm going to narrow it down and focus. Mr. Byrne, the issue of founded or unfounded is, for us, is founded in the questions that we've been getting and that's why we wanted to do this. Many constituents don't understand this concept and so I, I would say that that's the basis of our foundation and it being founded. But Jerry, I want to go back to something you mentioned earlier because this is really where the rubber hits the road for me and many of us who are in the budget process. You mentioned earlier that for a lot of large, or at least several large companies, you maintain, um, you know, their, their, uh, basically their TPA, if you will, if, if that's the same cross term. So if there is loss, what, who assumes the risk?
So under the self-insured, it's always the plan sponsor or the employer that takes the risk. Um, you know, they fund it. You're, you're paying a premium, but the premium is really a fund to fund your claims. So the difference between your current plan of fully insured and self-funded, nothing really changes except the funding mechanism because you're not buying insurance to make the insurance company take the risk. You're taking the risk and you're funding your claims. And you're funding your claims, so, you know, we didn't bid for medical, so we didn't really study the medical RFP to determine if there's changes in your benefit plan. Our experience with our large groups that are self-funded today, when they transitioned to the self-funded program, they had to make a fundamental change in the behavior of their employees, which means I want to change some benefits and I'm going to shift some of the responsibilities to you, the employees, so you can begin to take charge of your healthcare. And they've been successful. My company has been successful in doing that. We helped premiums down and reduced premiums on the employee side for the last five years. But we've not had any client from self-insured go back to, to fully insured because they're losing money. So somewhere along the line, the, you know, the self-insurance, uh, program makes sense. It is a new concept for Guam, just like the high deductible health plans, when they introduced that, nobody wanted 1,500 or 2,000 deductible. Now it's an acceptable plan in the market. Self-insurance is the same way. It's brand new. Um, you know, employees and, and consumers may not understand it. What does it mean? Do I fund it? Uh, if there's no confidence in the government of Guam funding their own claims, for instance, so the, the concerns are valid. Um, but I think the government of Guam going self-funded may open, um, the door for more of our market to consider it. I mean, I'm getting companies that are an 80-man, a 70-man group wanting to fund their own insurance because they refuse to pay these premium increases each year. So, um, it is a new concept and it's going to take time for, for the market, not just the government of Guam, but for the market, the Guam market, uh, to begin to accept and adapt to that.
But maybe deeper to my question though, Jerry, is you're re-insured, right?
Right.
So you're not going to take that out of your pocket? You're going to be able to claim that?
Yeah, so what we do with the, with the self-funded plans is we buy reinsurance or stop-loss for claims in excess of, of an amount, what is called an attachment point or deductible. So groups typically would take the risk for the first 150,000 or 125,000, um, of claims and then reinsurance or stop-loss kicks in after that. And that's where an employer is then protected for any catastrophic, um, claims above, above their risk level.
So Ed, what's the plan?
Just that, Senator.
You're going to buy reinsurance?
We're going to buy stop-loss insurance. That was part of the whole, uh, whole plan. And as I explained before, um, you know, the, the cost of that was built into the premiums that Milliman built up, but concertively, we didn't take the benefit of the, of the excess losses that we wouldn't have to bear.
So on the record today, you're going to let us know, because we're going to get ready to pass a budget, that there will be no effect? The premiums will handle whatever issues you have and we will not have to have supplemental appropriations or anything to manage any risk?
That's, that's, that's the plan.
That's the plan.
Obviously, like, like Mr. Campello was saying, um, did, something could happen, right? That, like COVID again. Fortunately, with COVID, the federal government stepped in and we didn't have to bear some of the, many of the costs of, of a pandemic that nobody, uh, nobody understood, um, or even anticipated was going to happen. The actuaries have based their, their numbers on what they believe to be conservative principles. Uh, so I, I, I think it's highly unlikely that we're going to have, uh, any, any need for additional funds beyond the, the planned premiums.
So are you currently in active procurement for stop-loss insurance?
Yes, the, um, the actuaries are handling that at the moment.
Okay.
And could I just also go on the record as saying that we did make two small changes to the benefits that, that are worthwhile, um, recounting here. We increased the cap on the dental benefits from $1,000 to $1,500 because we were told that, uh, if you went to the dentist, you were going to incur a bill that was already over $1,000. So that's been built into, into the plan and we had to increase the floor on the HSA 2,000 plan to comply with IRS regulations.
So are you current, do you currently have stop-loss for your current self-pay on dental and?
No, no.
Why?
It's generally only needed for, for men, uh, for medical because that's, that's the, that's where you get the large claims.
Okay. But right now, we're looking at 149% in terms of at least tables that I've seen on pharmaceuticals.
Yeah, we're going, I, I don't know where those numbers come from, but we're going to, we're going to scrub those numbers and, and, and make sure that we, we fully understand what, what is being done.
Okay. So Frank, I want to go back to you because I think this, as far as from a user, end-user, the insured and the employees, this, this is where most of the, and I think we need to really get this on the record, this is where most of the trepidation is. Uh, of course, from us here, having to balance budgets, ours is, are our projections correct and are we going to need, are we going to expect anything outside of what we budget? I think we're, with stop-loss insurance, we, it sounds like we'll be able to manage that. The issue now is, you've put this on the record before, but I want to just hear it again. So there's, basically, it sounds like we're self-insuring for anticipated savings, but everything else is the same. You're, 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 we're under self-insurance, but yet you're, you're managing everything. You're collecting the premiums, they're remitting premiums to you, you're managing the plan, you're managing all of the issues with regard to, uh, the individual subscribing and just the whole plan, kit and kaboodle, basically?
Yeah. The administration of the benefits and the plan has been, uh, contracted with us and yes, so we, we do the same way, we do that the same way for the government of Guam as we do it today for, for our carrier. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. So Ed, as far as, then you mentioned that there was the, kind of the balancing of what you currently have in terms of how you've managed to come forward on the potential premiums? Uh, reductions for individuals currently on one side, increase on the other, kind of meeting in the middle. So as far as the way you fashion the budget and the way the budget is currently designed, do those numbers match up in terms of what you're anticipated to collect in premiums from the employee and the government share?
We've only briefly spoken to OFB about this, um, but it was our understanding that OFB, because it's, it's basically they that compile the budget, uh, took account of, uh, the, these numbers. There are two areas where, uh, there's a, a actual sum certain. One is for the retiree premiums, um, which are paid directly from the general fund, um, and, um, rather than the, rather than the agencies because the, the agencies fund this through their payroll, right? It's part of the payroll, uh, but the retirement fund pays it directly. So that's a sum certain in the budget and we believe there's sufficient funding in there for that. And also, as I mentioned, the Medicare supplement or the, the ability for retirees to have their Medicare Part A and mostly Part B premiums paid by the government to encourage them to participate in the RSP plan. We believe there's enough funding for that, too.
So going back to providers, maybe Frank, this question will help. It sounds like we're imagining not a perfect world, but a, a world in which there's not a cash deficit. So as a provider, and I'm sure you're the same, Jerry, as a provider normally, when you're managing the risk, you're going to pay that claim because you have the maneuverability between loss and managing your capital to be able to do that. If the government is short for any reason, what is the, what's the mechanism? What, what's your recourse to the government if they're not remitting or if they're experiencing losses?
Well, at least in the experience that we had had before, uh, the fund had premiums and again, uh, the director and the Department of Administration is asking the legislature to fund that fund. So we hope that you funded correctly and we, we hope to pay the, the claims from the fund. Yeah. So, but, uh, again, as I said earlier, even today, there are disputes with providers. Uh, 99% of the claims are paid on time. There are some claims that still have disputes, uh, but for the most part, claims are paid on time and we hope, we hope to do that in the future as well, you know? It's not a perfect, uh, world. Uh, we are not claiming 100% correctness, but our, our track record, Senator, is quite good with our providers. As I said earlier, we got to understand the providers' concerns and we hope that with the help of the government, you know, you now are the insurance company, that we have to alleviate those providers' concerns. This, this particular, uh, self-insure program as opposed to the others of the government of Guam that I mentioned, the self-insure catastrophic plan that the government of Guam doesn't have, uh, the, the, the typhoon, uh, that's a little more concerning than this. This fund has a revenue source and the revenue source is the premiums from both the government of Guam and the employees that have been, uh, put together, analyzed by a firm that does this for a living, same, same with the actuarial firms that do it for us. And they have given the government of Guam scope as to where to go for premiums and we're hoping that all of that meets the 100% loss ratio that is permissible by the government of Guam minus our administrative fee.
Yeah.
Was that precise, Governor? I mean, Senator Duñez, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, Frank, I, I, you know, I, I get the, the self-insurance and the risk and the, and the things we do with typhoons. I think the difference. I think the difference is the individual is in control of that, whether they put up their shutters, whether they do whatever, they trust the government to go get their money where they're going to get their money from. An insurance plan is something personal to somebody because it's life or death for them in terms of how they're going to manage their care and what they get. So my discussion basically was based on remittances. You have to trust the government under this setup to basically get you that money. Because aside from that, when you were managing before, you're collecting that premium yourself.
And the experience that we have, at least with the dental again, we, we, we didn't have issues with the government and our providers didn't have any issues with us either, you know?
So you're using past performance, but yeah, and which is fine. But I, the, like I said, the whole purpose of, of a lot of us wanting to do this was exactly for this reason, because there is more questions and answers from consumers. That's just a fact.
To put some context also, Senator, we pay out in Medicaid claims almost the same amount. It's about 130 to 135 million. When we had to find 45% of that matching, it was, we, we often struggled to find that local matching. Fortunately now, you know, with the federal government contributing a much higher percentage, it's much easier to pay it. And as I say, we, we pay it out regularly every two weeks. But we still have to find that, that local match and, and we do.
That's all I have for now, Madam Chair. I'll continue to listen. Thank you.
Cito Smasi, Senator Duñez. Senator Tadegui, you're recognized.
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you so much for being here. Mr. Camacho, I mean, Chris Hostomo, did I hear you correctly that with the self-insurance, it's been increased 1,500 for dental?
Right. So the, the significant change in the dental, I think the only change in the dental plan for your FY '24 went from $1,000 coverage to $1,500 coverage.
Then that's, that's great news because that $1,000 has been in place since 19 forgotten. And I've been pushing, you know, to have that, you know, that cap lifted to at least 1,500. So it's, that's good news. That's real good news. Mr. Burns, has the, has an agreement already been made between Netcare and Selectcare been signed? And, and if not, when is the, like, the drop dead date to sign the agreement?
Very often, like, like the current year, it takes a fair amount of time to sign a contract. You know, signing a government contract needs a lot of signatures and it, it takes time to get through the system. The agreement we have is based upon a bid and acceptance. And we have issued, and in answer to the speaker, we have to look at some of that wording, but we have issued a contract to both TPAs to review.
Okay. So can you give kind of a estimate? Because, you know, we go into the fiscal year, you know, '24 on October 1st. So are you going to try and get this done within what, the next three weeks?
Oh, I don't, yes, we are, but it very rarely was done before the beginning of, of the applicable financial year. But behind me, I believe, is some, two gentlemen from the Office of the Attorney General, and I'm sure they'll cooperate with us at getting, getting it through the system as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burns, if you, if we didn't go through with this self-insure, will the premiums be much higher than what we're experiencing right now in the premiums today?
As I explained, the, the overall premiums increased by about five, the total premium, government and employee, increased by about 5%.
Okay. So even if we go with self-insure, self-insurance, if we didn't go with self-insurance and we go with what we have today, how much of increase will it be then?
If we had reg, fully insured, we think, as I say, would be somewhere between 14 and 15%.
Increase?
Increase, yeah.
That's huge.
It, it is. These were numbers that we got from, we asked our actuaries and these are the numbers we got from them. Medical costs unfortunately tend to increase very rapidly. And of course, as Mr. Campello explained, the, some, quite a large amount of our claims originate off island as well, and they're increasing even faster there.
Yeah, I understand. The cost of medical, medical has gone up substantially. It's experiencing throughout all of the U.S. too as well. But because we're, we're doing this self-insurance, doesn't it kind of give a little more of a balance between, you know, one company that really, what's the word? Sorry, we've been in budget all day. For instance, you know, the younger generation, you know, those who don't get sick very often, you tend to go to one particular carrier that's cheaper, right? And then you have those who, you know, really have medical issues and want to go to another carrier because they're, well, very good at what they're doing and very helpful and providing, you know, more of an opportunity for different areas to, to, to go to for their medical needs. So when that happens, you know, there's kind of a imbalance, you know, in that. So being self-insured, does that bring it more of a balance to why, you know, it's going to be cheaper and, or, yeah?
That's indeed part of the goal. What we found over the last few years when we were fully insured, especially if we had a choice of carriers, that each of them was concerned that they might get a greater proportion of sicker people. So they built that risk into the premiums. And if they both did it, the risk, the, the risk of one thing happening was being priced twice. So in, in taking the whole population, we should be mitigating that risk.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Byrne, on, on your letter that you sent to us, there's a section here that says mitigating risks of self-funding. That's on page nine. Can you kind of explain, explain that section?
Yes, Senator, this is relating to the stop-loss matter.
Kind of like what we were just talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
Milliman has recommended, the last sentence on the page, that Gov Guam purchased stop-loss insurance to protect against unexpected high-cost claimants. And as I just explained, that's generally in medical, in the, in medical risk and not the others.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. So I just wanted to clarify that, that was the whole meaning behind that. Also, in a section here, define opportunities for government in Guam under self, self-funding section, this is on page 10, number four, identify sites of care efficiencies, identifying site of care efficiencies and consider opportunities to steer clear, I mean, to steer care to the Philippines and Taiwan when it would be more economical for the member and government of Guam.
Yes, there, there are a number of future opportunities here. One of the, if I may just go down them, because some of the, some members might be interested in this. I mean, we want to make sure that as soon as an enrollee qualifies for ESRD, you know, which is the end-stage renal disease, which is covered by Medicare, but not, you have a waiting period. We want to make sure that as soon as they've exhausted that waiting period, they're moved to a Medicare plan so that the government plan doesn't have to cover it. The, the second one is encourage the Medicare-eligible retirees, and I already spoke about that. We're trying to make sure that retirees who qualify, and we may have noticed last year that we had to have several subcategories of retirees, like when, when one spouse is a Medicare-eligible member or both spouses are Medicare-eligible. We want to make sure that we, we maximize the number of people for whom Medicare is primary. The, the third one is, is a little bit more complicated, but we want to work with the, the TPA for retiree drug subsidies, because there's a subsidy for Medicare patients to make sure that the drug cost for them is no greater than the Medicare Part D cost. So that's another opportunity for cost-saving. And the fourth one to which you refer is to try and make sure that we use centers of care which are more economical than, than others, right? I, I already commented on the high cost of medical care in the, in the States and in Hawaii. So if we can reasonably get good medical care in other places, it certainly would be more economical to do so. Clearly, we'd like as many people as, as we can to get their care here because they have family support here. There's all, number of good reasons for making sure that as many people do get their support here. But if that support isn't available, we want them to get the best.
Thank you so much. Also, if you go further on page seven, it says, conduct an RFP process for pharmacy benefit manager or group purchasing organization contract for a self-funded pharmacy benefit for FY '25 and '23, '27. So that's a little bit different. I mean, it's not different, it's a little bit far out, you know, on, on that timeline. But you mentioned earlier that you're looking at hiring at least two individuals at DOA to monitor some of these. Is that included in your FY '24 budget? Did you, will your budget are, maybe not because you're just doing this, but maybe I'll reword it to, would your budget that's in the FY substituted, you know, budget for FY '24, will, will you already have the funding to cover these two individuals?
The funding will come from the plan.
Oh, that's right. That's right. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. That's right. You did mention that. So it's not going to cost any, any additional funding. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Burns. Oh, Frank, I do have a question for you. Why would you think any of these doctors, you know, I've heard stories that some doctors won't even, you know, take MIP patients, which is very sad to hear because, you know, they're most vulnerable here and the poorest, that some doctors won't even see them if they're under MIP. You know, that's government-funded, right? So we're looking at self-insured here. So my question is, why would you think doctors would not want to be a part of this or, you know, turn people away who are self-insured under the government of Guam?
Well, the specific reason as to why they don't see the patients, that I cannot tell you, Senator. Has there been a concern about payment from MIP? Yes, and I think the MIP has been perennially underfunded. Fortunately for the government of Guam, the federal government has come up with allowing the federated states or micro-nation citizens to now be covered under Medicaid, you know? So they were a significant component of the utilization of the MIP program. So that MIP program should be significantly better today. But as to why not see an individual patient that comes to your clinic, that part, Senator, you got to ask the medical community. But yes, the concerns with the payment were there and, and, and we got to address those concerns. Our clinical providers need to survive, their employees need to get paid, and those concerns need to be addressed, definitely.
And we've had, and we've had insurance companies on this island that were very late in paying, you know, for Gov Guam many a times, to a point we've almost had to sue them to pay the government of Guam on, on any claims. So that, that's an issue and maybe that's a concern for these doctors, you know, not wanting to go through Gov Guam. But oh, I didn't, my time is up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. I will yield back to the Vice Chair at this time for round number two.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, gentlemen. Very informative. Mr. Byrne, you know, there's, it's been asked of you a couple of times, and I know that a couple of times that you, the, the, the answer that you've provided was in the areas of percentage, okay? And I think there's individuals that would like to know a little bit more. What is the increase that, as far as premiums, that people should expect come October 1st?
I hope I'm looking at the right schedule here, but for, for, for an example, for a single employee who, under the PPO 1,500 plan, the, a take-care employee would see a 5182 increase per month, per pay period, I should correct myself, which is about $1,300 a year. And a Selectcare current subscriber would see a $28.62 decrease, which is like $744 a year. But it, the, the amounts are different. We have, we have a schedule and we will issue it.
Okay, please, I appreciate, I would be, be able to appreciate a copy of that, too, if you can. You, you did mention earlier too, that the discussion was on the stop-loss coverage and that you are in the process of procuring it?
Yes, sir.
And we hopefully that we'll have that policy in place before, if you'd?
We will. We will have it in place before.
Where's the funding you get? Where, where are you getting the funding for the?
It's built into the premium rates.
The premium, but see, the premium rates today are for the current year.
It's built into the premium rates for the new period, that, that the actuary's built up.
So you're going to be able to have an insurance company that's going to go ahead and provide you insurance coverage without you making the first premium payment before the, effectively?
It's been built, that's why we have the actuaries. It's been built into the rates and the rates that I mentioned have that cost built into it. The cost of, the cost of the, the stop-loss premiums.
Before I get into a little bit more of the contract, you had mentioned earlier, and this is referencing to page 10, going back to the future opportunities for Gov Guam under self-funding. You mentioned that encourage Medicare-eligible retirees to enroll in Medicare so that Medicare pays a primary, you know, Gov Guam is a secondary. What are your plans to be able to do that and what are your, what's your alternative if they say, I don't want to, I want to stay here?
Well, it's not, it's not compulsory. It's voluntary. We've had, I mean, pretty good response, especially, you know, there's, there's a group of people who predate the, the Medicare payment by Gov Guam in the, on your salaries. There's a group of people that predated, retired before then, so didn't have Medicare Part A, which is the really expensive premium. And so we have a pretty high uptake of those people. We, but the, we've spoken with the retirement fund, but the retirement fund is represented on the negotiating team and they've undertaken to partner with us because it's actually they that pay out the, the premiums or reimburse the premiums to, to their members to, to maximize that amount.
And I understand and I appreciate the, and the effort to be able to do this is because, let's, let's, they're, they're the more riskier part of the pool, okay? And, and to, to encourage that, I'm just, you know, I wanted to know a little bit more as to what your, what, what, what the plans were to be able to, to, to encourage them to be able to do that.
Well, we already this year got a fair number of people. I don't remember the exact number, but there's a fair proportion of, of retirees did move to the RSP plan. So we have seen some benefit from that and we're going to continue that, that process.
Okay. So is it in my understanding that your contract hasn't been signed yet?
Yes.
It has been signed or?
It has not been signed yet.
Okay. What about the contracts? We're all complete with regards to the contracts for, for the current year?
There was a delay with, not with Selectcare, but with Take Care. I think the contract is now. I think the contract is now with the Attorney General, but I'm not absolutely sure where it is at the moment.
Wait, wait, what? It's where?
With the Attorney General for review.
For the current year?
For the current year, yes.
What was, today's August 18th. When were you given the contract? When was the contract turned over to the government of Guam?
There was a, there was a significant delay with securing Take Care's signature on the contract.
There was a significant delay in what?
Delay in securing Take Care's signature on the contract.
So Take Care had this contract since then?
Since, you know, since very, very close to the beginning of the financial year. This isn't unusual, unfortunately, with the medical plan. It has happened in the past.
If I may, Senator, it's been historically very late. It's not the first time. And it has happened to us historically, it's been a late process, you know, so it's...
Yeah, but then we, you know, Frank, I'm...
I'm just giving you history.
I'm trying to protect and for the interest of both sides. And in my side, okay, as having the responsibility, your responsibility to manage the finances of the government, there are certain laws and parameters that need to be followed, okay, in order for proper payment and legal payment to be made, okay? We jump on people's, on agency and vendor's cases for demanding or for making payment when there are not those, you know, those agreements in place, okay? And so that's a revelation to me. Whether it's happened before, it happened before, but you know, I'm concerned about now, here and now, in as far as the transition and everything.
It's far from ideal, obviously, and not the situation we want to be in. And we'll work very hard to make sure that under, for fiscal '24...
Well, you know, I mean, if it's Take Care, okay, then I can understand. But, Mr. Burns, so you're telling me that it's just very recently that Take Care submitted the, the paperwork over to you to get the contract signed?
Yes, I believe so.
Very recently, in the area of basically the last couple of months?
I would have to go back and have a look.
I think you'd better go back because there's a representative of Take Care that's sitting here that's basically, you know, giving me these, you know, that's not the truth.
Well, you have the benefit of seeing behind me, and I don't.
So what assurances am I going to get that these contracts will be in place in, for the future? Are we confident that it's going to be in place before we start on October 1st, Mr. Campillo? Mr. Krasowski?
Well, you know, we just, the award just came out about two weeks ago, last week, no, last week. So we, we just finalized our draft of the contract that will be sent Monday to DOA. Our, our target is to get a contract signed by October 1st. But, you know, you're making the rounds to all the rev and tax, to BBMR, to the AG. As long as we sign our part and we send it to DOA prior to October 1st, we always get contracts, we try to get contracts executed before the effective date. You protect the plan and you protect...
I do protect, in this case, the insured, okay?
So we work off the draft of the contract in the RFP as the basis. That may not be the final because this is, you know, it's a draft. We just finalized our dental contract ourselves, that will be transmitted Monday.
And we're in the same process, Senator?
Yeah.
Okay, and so, you know, I can appreciate that you'll be able to get it to them and that you, like Jerry, you said you've already signed it off and everything and waiting? Okay, again, the concern here is making sure that everything is in place before we move forward. We're talking about people's lives, okay? You know, in the earlier discussion when we talked about GovGuam and its notoriousness for being self-insured, well, get me started with regards to self-insured, GovGuam self-insured with regards to infrastructure, okay? And based on that, those histories, that's why I have the concern with this, okay? Because I've heard self-insurance being, you know, I understand that we put it in, into statute that we can do for health insurance. But GovGuam has been claiming health insurance for the longest time, and a lot of times, you know, when we have to claim the self-insurance, we don't have the insurance. And that, therein lies the concern of a lot of the people that are calling us. It's not so much, to tell you what, Jerry and Frank, and Ray, I appreciate you being here. They're not concerned with you guys, okay? They're concerned with the government of Guam. That's, and we need to make that very clear. But at the same time, I need to make sure that if this is a contract between you and the government of Guam, which I have, okay? I need to know where, you know, where those, where we're lacking, where things are not falling into place, okay? One last question, and, you know, Mr. Burns, because apparently my, my time is up on this side. If, for, in fact, that the ratio, loss, loss ratio for the prescription and the dental coverages that we have for now, here and now, if in fact that there is a ratio that is more claims than there are premiums that were submitted, how are we going to pay for that? We don't have stop-loss insurance, we didn't get one. How are we going to pay for it?
Well, like Mr. Campillo said, you would make it up in future years. That's the practice of insurance companies. Were it significant? You know, I guess there's a significant difference and an insignificant difference. If it's insignificant, it would just wash through the system. If it's significant, you would have to make it up. That's the nature of self-insurance, that's the nature of insurance.
I understand that's the nature of insurance and everything, but we're talking about GovGuam self-insurance. And when we're looking at a looming $10 million loss, loss in this, we don't have room in the budget right now. There's no discussion in the current budget to be able to take care of that. That's another concern that I have, that I'll talk about later because my time is up. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Minority Leader. Speaker, do you have a follow-up questions for round two?
Yes, thank you very much. I'll try to be quick. So first of all, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. You, you recommended to the governor up to non-exclusive contracts, up to three vendors. And she chose one, and you had a differing opinion of whether you needed three by the law versus one by the law. Are we going to see her decision or her award or her, anything like that that explains that?
Yes. The governor's office has just put out some frequently asked questions and answers. I don't know if it's answered in there because...
It's not.
I've been here, but if it isn't, I will certainly speak to the governor's office about it.
Are we going to see, isn't, normally she sends a letter, isn't it? I've, I remember reading these letters as to why she chose whatever she chose after your recommendation.
Okay, we, I will speak to the governor's office so that you can get that documentation.
All right, I'd like to see that explanation. And then, and then, did she choose the, the best, the most economical and beneficial?
Yes.
And that was Select Care for the medical and the others? Okay, then, but going with self-insurance, we are still, the overall cost is still increasing despite going with self-insurance and despite removing the BPT, right? So I think you testified like 5%. All right, and so that cost, we're going to, of course, cover between the government and the ratepayers, the employees and the retirees. And you just testified earlier that the retirees and the ratepayers are going to be seeing these increases that you said. Well, particularly those who currently have Take Care definitely are going to be seeing increases. Those with Select Care are actually going to be seeing decreases in their premium, their rates, right? So I'm, and then I'm in, on page seven of your letter to me, you, you said that you're including in these rates a margin to cover a contribution to surplus that is normal, usually included in the cost buildup during the first few self-funded years and during other times of growth. So I can understand why we want that buildup of surplus and why you want a margin. I totally understand that. My own, my only issue I want to get back is, can we affect that at this point so that it's not, it's not these increased rates for these retirees especially and active employees? Can we, the government, cover more of that this year? You know, that, I think you have a, what is it, 70 or 80% that the government currently covers, and the rest the employees cover. But can we cover more to make, instead of charging more rates to make up for your contribution to surplus or your margin? Can we, the government, cover that? Do you have an amount that, that, what is your margin? I, I just think that would be a win-win for the, for the employees. They're, they're already having to deal with this huge shift in, you know, to self-pay. That's going to be big, very confusing for them, very concerning, especially those in the biggest class whose rates are going to be going up. And I'm concerned about those who currently access FHP clinic. Will that be included in your network, Mr. Campillo?
Senator, currently, the FHP clinic is a non-provider. There is non-participating provider benefits. And we look forward to talking to FHP and see if they want to be part of the network as well. We have discussions in the past, and we hope to make them a participating provider as well. At least from our side, we have the willingness to do that. So let's hope that we can work together on that, Senator.
All right, and so, Mr. Burns, do you have any role in that? Because that is another, another thing that they were going, they are going to have to deal with, that loss of provider if that's their clinic currently, right? And so while they're shifting to increased rates, they're shifting to self-insurance, a whole other process, they're also going to have to look for a provider. That's why I'm asking, yeah, do you have any role in this provider, FHP clinic being covered?
Well, may I ask, answer what you were asking before because it leads into that. Yes, I mean, we could take out a margin. I'm not sure that would be fiscally prudent to take out a margin because like we...
I don't, no, I don't mean taking out the margin. I mean, taking that margin burden off of the consumer and putting it on the government as opposed to vice versa.
Well, yes, but that would be a budgetary consideration.
Pardon?
That would be a budgetary consideration because you, the, the funding for that...
Yes, of course.
Would have to be in the budget.
Yes.
And I, I'm not sure that it currently is.
No, that's why I'm asking you about different sources, like reimbursement from FEMA or excess funds.
Well, excess funds is, you know, I think we've used all the excess funds. We mentioned that during the budget negotiations. Reimbursement for FEMA, you know, takes a long time and may not happen when, when we start, and probably won't happen when we start this program. So we will be starting out without the margin. I answered a question previously about the cash flow and how we do expect premiums to lead the claims lag. But we, I don't think we want to take too many risks with this. So at the moment, what we, what's been proposed is actuarially what was proposed by...
Yes, with a margin, and I agree with the margin. But what would that be if the government was going to pay it instead of the ratepayer? And would, is there a way to just ease this increase, the increased rates? What amount does the, that stop, stop-loss insurance, what amount will that kick in? You said the actuarial is working on that?
Yes, they're working on actually obtaining it. To answer your question about the, the margin, it, it's estimated to be 2% of projected claims. So it's not a huge amount. The, the stop-loss is estimated to be 5% of claims. Both these numbers are very conservative.
Is there a set amount for that 5%?
Of claims.
Oh, but when, when will it kick in? Like when, for what type of claim? Or is that, that an amount, right?
Yes, we haven't finalized that, whether, whether the margin, you know, it could be half a million, it could be a million. We haven't decided that yet.
But that will be in place before October 1st?
Yes, ma'am, yes. And to answer your quest, your second question about, about providers being inside or outside the network, we would certainly encourage, we're not necessarily currently planning to take an active part in that because, as Mr. Campillo explained, it's really his network, and that's what we're using. But we are aware of that, and we encourage FHP and Select Care to come to an agreement.
I just think that that was a big factor in their selection between, you know, some people don't like change, so they want to keep with the same providers, particularly with doctors, so...
I'm one of those.
Yes, so, yeah, I hope that that can be considered and taken into account. But I'm really hoping, Mr. Burns, we can get a real concrete answer regarding this margin and the increase in rates, if there's a way to offset that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Truly appreciated. Senator Jesse?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd like to, if we can, hear from the providers, the docs. But just one question to Mr. Burns. Did I hear correct that we have zero funding in the reserve funds?
In which funds, sorry?
The reserve funds. Do we have any money?
Well, not yet because we haven't, we haven't started the program.
Okay, so, okay, so we have zero starting, right?
Yes, that's, that's again the nature.
Got it, got it. Can we hear from the docs?
We just have a couple of more colleagues, and I promise you, we'll get to them right away. Senator Duennas, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I want to hear also from those. I'm a little curious now that we've discussed the delay. How then, without a contract, if we start the first year, do you remit premiums if you don't have a contract? How are you doing it now?
We're just, you know, we, we sent out a bid. The bid was responded to, and we're, we're following that process. As I say, it's not ideal. It's less of a problem if it's just a TPA administrator than if it's a full insurer. But as, as you heard, you know, in the past, it's taken a long, long time to get these contracts actually in place. Generally, that's generally true of GovGuam except we're up against, you know, a fiscal year timeline.
So you're going to be operating as though you have an obligation without a fully signed contract?
That, yes, basically.
And there's no liability associated with that?
Well, I don't think the liability could be any more than the liability in the contract. As I say, I, I don't, I don't welcome it. I think it's something that we're very well aware of this year, and we're trying to make sure that that doesn't happen for whatever reason.
Just once again, from our fiduciary responsibility on this side of the aisle, since the Attorney General is here, Graham, I think, and Mr. Gomitata, I think we're probably going to seek your advice on that, on the issue of a non-consisted contract and an agreement between the government of Guam and providers in terms of those remittances and, and how that works. Is the government of Guam, is it, what's the, is it binding? And what are the obligations? I mean, it's, it's to protect both sides, I would imagine. I mean, when you see it that way, Mr. Burns, I mean...
Yes, I, as I say, I, I don't, I don't enjoy or endorse the current situation.
I mean, it's like the difference between common law and, and being blessed by public health, right?
It's better to be blessed.
That's what my dad told me. So I, if we can hear from the...
Yes, I promise you, Senator Duennas, I'm just going to yield to Senator Tadegui real fast, and then we'll go straight into the next portion of the agenda, if I may. Senator Tello?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The one question I had was regarding the deductible. Was that mentioned earlier? I'm sorry if I'm having to ask again for that.
No, it wasn't, actually.
Okay, it was?
It wasn't mentioned.
Okay, so what are we looking as far as deductible? Or we still have the option of going to 2,000... Are we still have the option of going to 2,000 versus, you know, 1,000 plan? Is that still in play?
It's 1,500 plan, yes.
Oh, 1,500, I mean?
Both plans are being offered.
Are still incorporated into this? Okay, that's that's good to know. Also, it says here that. Okay, it's good to know that Select Care actually has a, you know, provider list that's similar to Take Care's. That's that's good to know. Is that it's very similar? So the members experience minimal to no disruption. Members are encouraged. I just saw an email that came from the governor's office and kind of, you know, frequently asked questions regarding, you know, third-party self-insured group. And they talk about the TP. They said third-party administrator. The third-party administrator, the third-party administrator is Select Care, correct?
For the for the medical and the pharmacy.
And for dental.
The dental would be Netcare, yes.
Okay, so we are still going through, if, you know, this goes through, we still go through Select Care for all the needs that we have, and that's the same way. So nothing's really changed in a way, right? It's pretty much the same thing. It's just behind the scenes, the money part, you know, calculating it and then paying it out. It's just very similar, right?
Correct. The payee, the insurance company changes to the government of Guam. Now the government of Guam is the insurance company.
So, Mr. Burns, when when you had the the team, the negotiating team, and it's made up of several people, I mean, there's something by law, you know. So when this team got together and looked at it, this was to them their best option for the people of Guam?
Yes, Senator.
This is nothing to do with politics. It's just the best option for the people of Guam. And because some of those people that are sitting there have nothing to do with the administration as well. I mean, many of them don't. So this is something that was agreed upon by everyone, correct?
Yes, I believe, my best recollection, it was a unanimous decision to to go down this path.
Yeah, and going from 15, I mean, you know, an increase of only 3% to 5% because of, you know, inflated growth, going back to the norm will take us up to 14% more increase. So.
That was what our actuaries say.
I think the the, as long as the.
Could I just say that with respect to the funding, you know, whether we're funding claims through a TPA or paying premiums to a carrier, we still have to find the funds.
Yeah, and, Mr. Christosimo, self-insured seems to be trending more, you know, especially when it comes to like medical malpractice, for instance. Some areas, certain people do that, they they self-insure. And, you know, I've been in property and casualty, not health, but we're finding more and more companies finding it more cost-efficient for them to go self-insured than they are to go with, you know, the insurance companies these days. Is that is that true?
Well, that's that's what we're finding with, the market is slowly accepting self, going self-insurance, and they're grappling with understanding how it works, the same way that your government of Guam is doing that now for the medical. But you've had you have the experience with the dental and the pharmacy for the last two years. But in the private market, companies are seeing are refusing to pay these higher premium increases in their insurance coverage, which makes up 80% probably of their expenses overall, right? So self-funding is another option because I can look at my claims experience in the last three years and come up with an amount that I'm willing to pay to fund my benefits for my employees. And at the end of the day, it should come out as a positive step for those employers that opt for self-funded. That's what we're finding with the the clients that we self-fund today. They prefer that model because they give the employees. I think you need to go at least two years, especially in the medical, self-funded, to get to where you need to stabilize your premiums. The first year, you're coming up from, you're going from a fully insured to a self-funded, your your experience on the premiums is based on that fully insured claims experience. So if that loss ratio is is high, that's what those that premium for the for the self-funded is going to look like until you get to the second year. And that's what we found with with clients, you know, we insure the largest, I can't say the names because I don't have permission to say their names, but the largest private sector employer. And they found that after two, three years, they're able to stabilize their premiums and hold down their their claims cost. Another, you know, another item that we're bringing to the market is data analytics. So with self-funding, it empowers the the employer to drill down on what's causing your claims, what's causing the, you know, the high claims and where and why is it happening? So that you can then make the informed choices to either change benefits or modify the benefits. But that's what we're seeing in this market, at least.
Yeah, I'm seeing the trend as well. You know, I think I think the negotiating team saw that as well and saw the importance of, you know, keeping costs down for the people of Guam. And this is one way to do so. So I thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Tadegui. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we've completed round two of the questioning. So we'll go ahead and if there's anyone else on the listening audience would like to submit testimony on this information hearing, they can do so by emailing senatormunia barnes@guamlegislature.org or may hand deliver to our office at suite 401, 411, 134 West Salidat Avenue, Hagonia, Guam. Next on the agenda, and I'm hoping that whoever has signed up to testify, you can make your way to the table right now. While I wait for the list, before I recognize the author of the legislation, I would like to note for the record that this bill, 154-37.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes.
If, before I leave, Madam Chair, can I just make one final comment?
Sure.
You know, a lot has been said about mistrusting the government of Guam. And I'm suggesting that we'll do everything on our side. I'm suggesting that the legislature also help us to change that image that is out there of the mistrust of the government of Guam. That's my closing remark. Thank you very much, and we look forward to servicing the government of Guam employees, retirees, and you guys. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Mr. Campillo. Thank you very much. I guess some of the other panel members need to stay on for the for the next bill. So with that being said, before I turn it over to the author of the legislation on 154-37 LS, which is an act to extend the 2022-2023 Government of Guam Group Health Insurance Plan, DOA, HRDEB, RFP, GHI 23-001 to September 30, 2024. I will note for the record, there has been a fiscal note submitted by Bureau of Budget and Management Research on this bill number, and it specifically says that the proposed legislation intends to extend the rollover of the current Government of Guam Group Health Insurance Plan to the next fiscal year ending in September 30, 2024, with all payment terms, promises, requirements, conditions, provisions, and representations to remain the same. Per the Director of Administration, it is neither possible nor practical to comment on the proposed legislation as the ongoing procurement of fiscal year 2024 Government of Guam. Health insurance programs inhibits further discussion. That was provided to us by BBMR. I yield to the Vice Chair and author of legislation 154-37 LS, Minority Leader, Senator Blascher, recognize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to be able, and thank you for bringing this this bill into this hearing. Bill number 154-37 LS is a simply very an act to be able to extend and to continue on the current health program or that that we have for the Government of Guam Group Health Insurance Plan, to continue it on until roll it over and and let it continue until September 30, 2024. You know, Madam Chair, you know, more so now than ever, as is based on the on the testimony and the discussions that we had in the informational hearing right before this, there there is clearly, you know, a number of questions that need to be, you know, that are still left unanswered and a lot of uncertainty that that remains within the group that is going to be affected, most affected by 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 this, by this health insurance, which primarily the government of Guam employees and their dependents, as well as the retirees and their dependents, those individuals that have enrolled in the government of Guam. And and as as a result, and as such, you know, I'm still very much concerned, trying to wrap my thing, how are we going to do this in such a short period of time now that it's going to have a level of comfort and ease, you know, for for our employees and our retirees to to accept this? It's not to say that this could be a good plan, but what is the plan? And, you know, today, tonight, you know, in in the very short time, not only did we have questions, but now we have even more questions with regard to this. And I'm sure that many other government of Guam employees and retirees are going to be affected by this have as such. There has been also concern within the community and with regard to the providers. If now the providers are uncertain about how this program is going to pan out, how it's going to work, it just adds to the uncertainty that that exists here. And so what we'd like to be able to do is to have more time for the discussion so that we can we can be better prepared if and when this this rollout is for the self-insurance plan. I'm going to close with this, Madam Chair. You know, I mean, I'm very much concerned. We're going into a plan there right now, based on testimony that we heard earlier. There is $0 in a reserve account that's necessary to be able to start up a plan. You know, one of the questions I would have asked in, you know, the the panel that was before us earlier, in their history of being able to deal with self-insurance programs, you know, with other entities, was there a reserve? What you probably, what you were going to hear, as you will see in many of the research, a lot of the research that I've done, is that there was already a reserve that was that that existed, you know, so that when the plan starts day one, there was the ability to be able to pay this. There's some concern as well with regards to what those costs, you know, what what medical loss ratio we have or the loss ratios that we have with our current self-insurance plan. And while there is some disparity and there's some concern with regards to whether or not there's going to be an excess or we're going to have a loss in the tune of millions of dollars, you know, one of the things that we have to worry about as legislators, how are we going to fund this? There's no room in the current budget to be able to fund this, much less fund the losses that may be anticipated or could be anticipated as a result of what's going on right now. So with that, Madam Chair, we, you know, myself, along with my colleague Senator Duennas, introduced a bill, this this bill, and I will stand ready and sit here and listen to the testimony provided by the by the individuals who wanted to come to testify tonight. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Minority Leader. I will now recognize in order those who've signed in in the sign-up sheet for this bill, 154-37 LS. And on on the top of the of the sign-in sheet, I have Dr. Thomas Shea. You you may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Senators. Couple of questions that I have, and I think the informational hearing was a little helpful. I wanted to get some clarification first before I proceed with testimony, is that the anticipated premiums, and I think Mr. Burns can probably clarify, the anticipated premium, if I heard correctly, was 130 million.
I will go ahead and and ask the Director if he'd like to yield. Would you like to yield to that, sir? Mr. Burns?
Yes, yes, the the estimated premiums were, I said, between 120 and 100, no, the premiums were 130 to 140 million.
Okay, and then the claims was anticipated to be about 120 million.
Would you like to yield, Mr. Burns?
Yes, that is correct.
So that's a surplus of 20 million in savings, correct? Around there? And then, and then what was the cost to pay the government is paying the TPA? 21.75, is that 21 million?
No, that was 21.7, for medical, it was $21.75 per participant per month.
So what does that add up?
It comes out about 35.
35 million?
You can address the chair.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that 35 million?
Madam Chair, is this a public hearing or a roundtable?
Again, this is a bill, Senator Tadegui, if I may.
Exactly, a public hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to verify.
Right, because I think in my testimony, Senator, is that I wanted to make sure that my testimony is correct, if I if I can get the right numbers, because there was no informational before I written my testimony. So I think I want to make sure I get that clarity before.
And I'm yielding to that, Dr. Shea?
Yeah.
And I respectfully asking the Director of Administration if he'd like to yield.
Yes, yes.
And if he's he's getting the answers right now, it looks like he'd like to yield. Would you like to yield, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
So for fiscal '23, the estimated premiums are 135 million. For fiscal '24, it's 141 and a half to 155, and just under 156 million.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Dr. Shea, you can proceed with your testimony.
Okay, yeah, sure. My name is Dr. Thomas Shea. I'm a board-certified OB-GYN, being on Guam for about 27 years, actually. So come Sunday. So I've been on this island for quite a while, and I've been through almost three decades of healthcare. And, you know, so that's quite a long time for a doctor who's not from here to remain on Guam. My testimony today is not on the TPA. Select Care is an excellent company. My testimony is the same regardless of who won the bid, whether Take Care, Stable, Netcare or Select Care. But I'd like to offer some tips for, you know, just to help Gov Guam improve the messaging to the providers and to the public, and hopefully ultimately make your self-insured plan a better plan. And so I like to ask, make sure you take my testimony as a constructive criticism to that. And, you know, this is the first time I've actually at a table with Mr. Burns. So I think that's a good start. The concern is the for a provider is the lack of transparency, always with government of Guam. And, you know, the inconsistencies that have been quoted in the media, and it appears that it's the media quotes that we've been getting all these feeders. The government track record with vendors is not good. So like Mr. Campillo said, it's the image issue that I think the government of Guam has to portray. So I think that's very important. And I have to disagree with Frank a little bit that, you know, you know, there's minority of provider who is concerned because I think there's many of us who are concerned and, you know, there's questions of the uncertainty. Now, starting with the the press release from Adaloup, it says, "Through this self-insurance model, our government will save more money on health insurance in the long run while improving benefits while we provide our employees to their family." I understand that dental plan has increased to 1,500. But you have to remember, and Jerry, I don't know if Jerry's still here, but I think Jerry Christosimo, he's a better speaker than I am, but I think the issue between dental and medical is a huge difference, night and day. Because with dental plan, you know a fixed amount that you're going to cost, there's a max of 1,500. So you can calculate the maximum expenditure because once reached 1,500, your your employees are responsible for the rest of the cost. For dental and medical, another big difference is that you never know what's going to happen in in the human body regarding cancer, hypertension, diabetes. And from the 27 years of being on Guam, government of Guam has very high-risk patients. You have a hard population that with diabetes, hypertension, stroke, and you never know when you're going to need an organ transplant. So those are catastrophic, you know, catastrophic cases that's going to really increase your your cost. And I can understand where people are uncertain of what the cost will be ultimately, and you're not going to know until you actually try it. But the headline when we read as providers, the GMH, for example, is facing a crisis, struggling to pay vendors. And the CFO actually says this, and you really have to think about this, right? How do you save costs? How do you save costs when the healthcare continues to escalate? And the expenses are still, and I quote, "The expenses are still there, if not higher than before." And I agree with the Speaker, who's not here, that she said that we have a crisis. And the issue of self-insurance, if you really look at it, if you look at GovGuam as the paying, becomes insurer to pay the TPA, which is the Select Care, I still am a little confused who is actually the payer. The payer in the media has said that Adaloupe, or the DOA, I'm sorry, is going to reimburse the TPA or Calvo Select Care for the claims paid. Now, does that mean that Calvo Select Care will be the person who's going to upfront the cost? Or are they going to wait until the account is built up in order to pay the claims? So that was a little confusing for me and for many of us providers, and, you know, many of the providers not here, but I'm sure if they're here, they have the same questions. Now, the other contradiction here is says that the healthcare plan administered as Select Care said the company will process claims in the same manner as currently process all claims and withdraw from the government account to fund the self-insured claim. So that's contradicting what was said earlier, and I think Mr. Burns had quoted in the media. And that's all we've been getting is the media quotes from these gentlemen. And that's the messaging that we have to work on, because if we tell the media something and it's contradictory, then it creates some doubts within the network of providers. And I think if we can get the messaging better out to the public, I think there's less confusion. Now, one other question is the prompt payment law. I know Mr. Christosimo, Net Care, has mentioned this before, and he has mentioned that Jerry had mentioned, "Provider payments should be very transparent under the self-funded model as if it was under the insurance carrier model," echoing that providers will be paid by the third-party administrator and not GovGuam. Now, what we need to know is who is ultimately responsible under the prompt payment law? Is the prompt payment law is going to be the TPA or is it going to be government of Guam? So, you know, that wasn't made very clear. I don't know if the Senator knows who is responsible for that ultimately. Yeah. Because under the prompt payment law, if you really look at it, it's the insurance companies that's responsible. But since the AG has mentioned that the government of Guam does not need a certificate of insurance or whatever certificate it need, so the question now is that if it doesn't fall under the insurance commissioner, the TPA should be the one that's responsible under the prompt payment law. That's how, I'm not an attorney, but if that's what it means. Now, there's another statement that was made by Mr. Christosimo, and again, I think Jerry should probably work on the quotes. He said, "We are very confident that GovGuam will always meet their financial obligations to its employees and retirees." Now, I think what he's missing there is that they should meet their financial obligations to the vendors as well, because government of Guam owes vendors 37 million or 30 million dollars from, you know, that's out there providing supplies so that we can help patients. So I think what we need to do is work on the messaging, and I think that's important, because people who hear what Jerry is saying is that, you know, the people who on credit holds would like to hear that, that GovGuam will always meet their financial obligations. But that's not true in what's in the real world, that's what's happening outside. So I'm almost finished here, actually. So, I mean, those are the things that we have to sort of iron out. So going back to, you know, following up on the informational hearing, what I'm also confused about is if you get a 141, let's just give you 140, around 140 million dollar anticipated premium, and then you have 120 million of loss in claims, you are a positive 20 million. Now, with the 20 million, you still got to pay your TPA 35 million, then you had a loss of already 15 million, and that's just basic math. So that doesn't add up. I'm not sure if I got those numbers right.
Speaker, can I respond to that?
I'll go ahead and allow it, and in the interest of time, I was going to ask everybody to do a five-minute presentation since the rules of engagement, but I'll yield to you right now, Director Byrne.
Thank you. The TPA fees are included in the claims figure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now you-
Dr. Shea, you can go ahead and start wrapping up.
Okay. Yeah, so I think that's, those are clarity that we need to know, because when you just say claims, we don't assume TPA. TPA to us is an agent, agent of the government that is running, it's not a claim per se, you know, under what our understanding is. But then again, you have a stop loss. Your stop loss, that's 5% of your premium. I assume that the 5% is also under the claims. I mean, when you precur the 5%, that's part of the claims, or is it in addition, 5% of the overall premiums?
I'm going to ask him to yield again. Please do.
Thank you. Just to be precise, it's 5% of the claims, not 5% of the premiums.
Okay, okay. Yeah, thank you.
It is included. The way the actuary's built up, the premium included these costs.
Right, okay. So that's, if you look at it, you know, your anticipated savings to be there. So I think overall on this, I think the other improvement that I think I can add to this self-insurance plan is that perhaps a good way is to pause and just take, you know, this coming year. Now that you have a plan that's out, you have Calvo's, you have Take Care, you have Select Care, Net Care, who is actually helping out with the, you know, the plan in process, what is the harm of continuing on in support of this bill, 154-37? There's really no harm, because what is to gain with the bill is to give you more time over the next 10 to 12 months to find a way to build up that bucket of funds so that you can start with something that's in there already. You know, whatever, if you want to work on that over this coming year, that's good. And then also, you can also look at the aspect of bringing people to the roundtable and actually talk to the providers, because ultimately, a health insurance or insurance plan is no good without somebody to provide that care. FHP, for example, is part of a big network as well, and right now, if you go into Calvo's, you won't be able to access the FHP. So I think those are the key issues that I think we can work on. Messaging, work together with the providers, be more inclusive, more transparency. And then the last thing is maybe take some time off to build up the funds.
Thank you.
But I do support the bill.
Thank you, Dr. Shea. Dr. Nguyen, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Nguyen, and I'm from American Medical Center. When I come to this hearing, coming out of it, I have more question than answer. It's create a lot more question for us as a clinic, as a major medical center in Guam to, right at this point, as we have a provider meeting yesterday, we have not make a decision of accepting GovGuam insurance or not, patient. That decision has not been made because we don't have enough information. And at this point, I still don't have enough information, there's more question about this. We have a majority of provider in Guam in the meeting yesterday by chance, and there's so many physician, provider, clinic that come up to me and express a concern of the upcoming self-insured healthcare program. And we have a pretty much a very large meeting yesterday. It's a room full in the drawing room. And they all have question, because there's no info out there for any one of them to decide. And we come up about six weeks away from a new insured program that we have no idea. And as you can see during the hearing today, that the trust is not from Select Care. You know, Select Care have been a wonderful, you know, partner with all the clinic. I have to say that, and it's not to bother Frank or anything, but the mistrust is on GovGuam. And I tell you from the experience, I never deal with GovGuam before, before the pandemic. But throughout the pandemic, I learned from GovGuam from one thing. If you don't have black and white on paper, you can't take anyone's word from it. You know, I represent the Chair, the previous Chair for the Governor. I put my name on the line for lots of clinic. Throughout many meeting with the top people on the leadership, the promise, the funding of our support for the pandemic, I'm sorry to say, Mr. Byrne, but, you know, to realize the back of a federal plan where you allocate things to help fund the clinic from the pandemic, it never mature. You know, I learned allocation is different than pain. And I learned that if you're on paper, doesn't matter how many meetings you go to, it's not going to be mature even when the government promised something. You know, on the private side, on the business, we sometimes go by word of mouth. You know, we just trust each other, and we are accountable for what we do. But for the government, nah, they're not accountable. The word they say, "I'm sorry, you know, we don't have the money." And I can say that confidently, because as a business, as a medical center, we deal with GovGuam, and yes, they have lots of self-insured program. One of them, we canceled about in April this year, because we provide the service. There's a self-insure service, but you cannot keep providing when the last payment is 2020. It's kind of odd. We do every dot and cross every T correctly, but if the government say, "I'm sorry, we know we owe you, and we cannot pay you, we don't have money," you're kind of stuck, can't do anything. So I'm not sure where the paperwork comes from with the Byrne, but, you know, the trust that the private side, the healthcare, the provider, is not for Select Care. If you go into a budget and you go into a healthcare program and you have zero reserve, I'm not sure any business plan can go forward with that. You know, yeah, Select Care will process the claim, will process the payment out of fund that you supposed to reserve for the healthcare need. But, you know, who can dip into that fund? I have no idea. You know, Cashflow's case, I have no idea who's going to do that. You know, the federal would not step in and rescue GovGuam on the healthcare. You know, it's a good plan, and I'll, along with the medical provider, will support the self-insure program, but I think you're going to need a lot more planning, because every question tonight, you don't have a definite answer. You don't have a firm answer. The number is, I guess, I predict, but you have no firm answer, no plan together, and you play with like 30,000, you know, life on the line. You know, it's not not Select Care. It's GovGuam, and you got to do something, and just like Dr. Shea say, you know, you have to sit down, provider, sit down with the patient that the employee of GovGuam, the active employee retiring, and discuss with them. Like, I'm telling you, none of my patient, which I have about, we're about 7,000, 8,000 GovGuam employee on our panel, and none of them have any idea of what's going through. And this is kind of sad, you have six weeks to go, and you have no idea. They ask me a question, I still don't know the answer. You know, so I think that it doesn't hurt to delay this, need a lot more planning, a lot more roundtable discussion with the patient and with provider, rather than just rely on a handful of people sitting around the table and not really understand the concept of healthcare. So I think that you need to go back and the same thing, just like anything else Dr. Shea is saying, that we read in the newspaper that the Governor and everyone else say to cheaper premium, the what I see here, that the majority of GovGuam belong to Take Care, and they're going to pay a higher price on the premium than the previous year. It doesn't make any sense, you know, because when you say something, and then now tonight is a different thing. So I kind of raise a lot more question for us. So again, as a provider, in the meeting we have last night, so many people there, and every one of them come up and say, "Please talk and make sure that the fund is there," because I tell you, it's the trust of government that they have problem with. So I would ask you, delay for one year, it doesn't hurt, because, you know, it's a lot of work on your part, a lot of work on our part to kind of switch gear. For example, I just tell you, to change from Select Care, no, from Take Care to Select Care is not that simple. You know, formulae is different, medication are different. And in order for us to change the medication, we have to make an extra appointment for our patient to come in to make the change. You know, you cannot change with the phone, it's a liability issue, and that's a lot of work to do. And it's not a well-planned thing that you can rush into when you talk about the life of many, many people. So again, it's not from Select Care. They will be a wonderful administrator for you, but Frank, that will answer the question, what happened when the fund is not there? Who's responsible to pay the fund when the fund is not there? You know, that's who is ultimately responsible for that. So again, Frank, that's the part where, you know, as a wonderful partner, we still have to look for our provider and our medical community, and especially, it's not for us, it's our patient. That's what the thing is, that it's a lot more complicated to come into something that nobody know. So that's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. And I just want to know that based on the rules of engagements, that I did allow the doctors to have more time to speak. So I know that my colleagues are going to ask questions, so, but I appreciate the presentation and the time that you took to wait here, because it's been over three hours. At this time, I'm going to recognize Mr. Frank Campillo for his testimony. You did sign up on the sheet, and you're allowed to speak at this time.
Thank you, Senator, again. We oppose the bill, first of all. Second of all, I'd like to make some clarifications. I personally have spoken to many clinics, spoken to Dr. Nguyen, and said, "We will work on addressing the concerns." I hope that the testimony that the directors talk about the premiums that are being charged, but I personally talked about GRMC, had a lunch with them a couple of days ago, have talked to IHP, SDA, many other providers, and they have told me that they have no issues with the process, that they look forward for us to administer the plan, you know. So we, again, asking you, the government of Guam, to help us change that image that the government of Guam has, you know. It's important that the community, all of those members of the health plan, realize that it's both on the sides of the policymakers and the leadership of the government of Guam to help us change that image. And we got to protect the providers. I have pledged to Dr. Nguyen and to Dr. Shea that we are going to work very hard to make sure that we meet the timelines of payments, something that, at least with our company, they don't have that issue on payments today. So we hope to continue the discussion, the dialogue, and we hope to have you, the policymakers, help us change that image that the government of Guam has. Thank you very much. That's my testimony today.
Thank you, Mr. Campillo. Director Byrne, you're now recognized.
Thank you, Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Several things that I would like to say, if you would permit. You know, I started my GovGuam career at GMH. I'm very well aware of the issues that arise with financing patient care. And I listened actually to the GMH testimony the other day on the budget hearings. And it's obviously very concerning that they have a gap. We were talking about gaps, but they have a gap between revenues and expenditures. So that's something we have to, it has to be addressed. But it really, when we're talking about the government of Guam, I want to be clear that we're talking about the central government of Guam. And in particular, the fiscal team that we have in place at the moment, who basically have, not to put too fine a point on it, turned around the finances of the government of Guam. We pay on time. You can talk to any of our vendors. Once we get the bill at DOA, and yes, sometimes they're held up in agencies for reasons that vary from the ASO is on leave or the ASO is sick or some other reason. But once we get the bill at DOA, we pay it and there's no reason not to because we have the funds. Sometime during the course of the year, I was asked, how do you define a government deficit? And my answer was that when you owe vendors more, then you can pay them. Because it's those vendors that are financing the government gap. We're no longer in that situation. At, at one time, I think it was probably in 2019, which is when I came to, when I came to DOA. At the end of the financial year, we owed Select Care, I think it was about eight million for retiree, retiree premiums. Select Care didn't stop paying the claims for those retirees. They bore that, that, that gap until we were able to pay the premiums. That's not, you know, so to reassure the physicians, right, that although we're not in that situation, Take Care, Select Care is responsible for making those payments. And I know they will take that responsibility seriously. As to the details of continuing the current policy, and just to confirm, Senator Blas, Take Care has signed the contract. I think it's just going the rounds with the Attorney General. But in the contract, there's a paragraph that says guaranteed renewability of health insurance coverage. In the event that GovGuam invokes a protection afforded by the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of 1986, as amended, founded at section 2712 of the Public Health Services Act and its regulations for the guaranteed renewability of health insurance coverage, which is what the bill is trying to do. The parties agree that coverage will be continued until a new contact is, contract is in place with the first 90 days of coverage guaranteed at the same rate and planned designs. So if that, if it's in contract, basically, and you continue that contract, the provider would have to keep the same rates in place for 90 days. But after that, it would be subject to renegotiation.
To apologize, thank you, Director Byrne. Before I open this to my colleagues, I will note for the record that there was a Teresa Underwood from CFWH. I don't see her here, but she did sign up on the sign-in sheet to say that she supports the measure, but did not cross off anything on the oral or written testimony.
Yeah, she, she had to leave, she's one of the OB-GYNs.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that that was noted for the record, that she was here and that she was here in support of Senator Blas' bill. With that being said, I will allow the vice chair to close. But before I do that, just yield to my colleagues to my right to see if there's any questions or any comments. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Lohan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Nguyen, you had mentioned about a payment or, I guess, a promise the government made with you and hasn't been settled since, I think, 2020. My understanding, you were, during the pandemic, you were a tier-two clinic, right?
Yes, we are tier-two AMC, FHP, SDA.
Okay.
As a tier-two.
Okay.
Yes.
My, my understanding that the government of Guam owes your particular clinic in excess of two, two-point-something million dollars?
Yes, you know, throughout the pandemic, and that's something that when we talk about self-health insurance and, and about the pandemic and how the federal come in and build GovGuam a self-insure program, I was just amazing, you know, it's just that we, you know, we can step in and help the tier-two for a few weeks. But when you expect to go two to three years and expand your own fund with the promise of many meetings, including with the governor and everyone else in the leadership, that, you know, we reimburse you for your, at least your service for the pandemic. And because GovGuam was so far behind, because there's a restriction, that isolation, everything, that we just continue to provide the service and, you know, and payment will come. And we have WhatsApp texts and we have email. The payment have been processed, but at the end of the day, it keep delay, delay, delay. Because again, it's just too verbal. And verbal is in the text and WhatsApp. You just say, you know, after why you say, if you don't have anything in writing, you really cannot trust, because you can't do anything, you know, to bring a lawsuit to GovGuam, it take years to process. You know, so we have sort of the loss, yes. From, we have many meeting that promised to pay, you know, upgrade the healthcare facility even for FHP, SDA. I talked to them last night, there's no payment, you know, it's on promise. So, and that's, I tell you, it's a meeting and I hope the Zoom meeting have been recorded and keep as a public record, regardless of official meeting. But, you know, I mean, at a certain point, if you can get paid, not because of Select Care, don't process the claim. And the endpoint is the fund from GovGuam, you stuck, you know. There's a credit hole or whatever you want to call it, but you will get delaying your payment.
Yeah, and, and my point is, is in your particular clinic, you're, what is your estimated, again, payment due supposedly, based on the promise by GovGuam for reimbursement?
We have about 600,000 on testing and about 2 million on service. You know, that tier-two you require to see everyone at no cost.
And, and that's, and again, what I'm trying to get to here is this. And that, and that is funding that came from the federal government?
Yes, as was, like I say, allocation is different than payment.
Sure. Mr. Burns, is, I mean, I don't know if you're, you're not responsible for the payment, but I mean, I guess, is there a reasoning behind the lack of payment to the tier-two clinics? And they're, they're receipt of a promise by the government in regards to, to, again, what is due, I mean, they're tier-two and they provided the service. And those are, those are not local funding, those are fundings that came from the federal government and they haven't received those payments.
Yes, first of all, could I just apologize if I appear to end rather abruptly? That's probably because I'm running out of steam, but, but I want to, I want to make sure that everything is covered. I can't really speak to that because I'm not really sure what, what Dr. Nguyen is referring to. But he did make a comment about things needed to be in black and white. You know, dealing with anyone, especially dealing with the government. You want to make sure that we follow the documents and the rules. So I don't really think we should be in the position of not following the documentation. I'm not sure, though, the specifics of what the doctor's referring to.
I deviate from the, of course, from, from, from the bill. But a point has to be made in the sense that the mistrust of, of the government, again, and the source of funding did not come from, from, from local funding, but came from the federal, federal side. But still not, again, tracked in there, but again, I, I, I deviate from the, the question. But the mistrust, as they said, comes from, from the government. Although it's not local funding, it's federal government funding and they're still not being paid. But anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lohan, Senator Duñez.
You know, Madam Chair, thank you once again, it's been very enlightening the entire evening. I think due to the lateness of the hour, I just want to make one comment. I obviously appreciate the doctors coming here and the representation that there continues to be concerned. I want to continue to listen. Madam Chair, I think this is gonna, you know, basically has given rise to the need to, to reconvene, to answer some more questions. My fundamental question in closing, Sir Byrne, and I think this has to be a serious discussion, is the, the existence and viability of contracts to begin with, going forward without consummation. And so I think we need to address that. We need to address the fact that, what, what does that mean? And, and so I, I think that that is an open-ended question at this point. And so we'll continue to listen, I believe. But I, Madam Chair, I can't help but say that I believe we're gonna need to have a follow-on hearing in order to be able to establish the viability across the board. You have any comments on that, Mr. Byrne?
We will update the status to, as soon as we can, Senator. But as I said, I believe the actual been signed by the provider. I think it's going the round of, of the government at the moment, but I will update it for you.
No, I realize that, but, Mr. Byrne, you realize what we're talking about here. I mean, we're literally up against the balance of time between now and a new procurement. And if that activity is, is even replicated in even a half of a amount of time, you're talking about well into the fiscal year, that has to be answered. I, 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 because I don't see it any other way. I mean, even as you read, the 90-day carry forward is locked, which basically means any procurement is open beyond that. So that's the agreement. I would imagine any, I would imagine Select Care will be looking at the same type of agreement for their contractual obligations and what it would mean for them going forward if there was a holdover under that circumstance. I just, Mr. Byrne, I have to say, this just is, it seems messy and, and, and I don't know how else to say it.
It is messy, we're going to sort it out. And more importantly, we're going to make sure that we don't have a recurrence in the year that we're discussing, which is fiscal '24.
And Senator, I think we spoke before about this. It seems messy, but we keep throwing a little bit of mess into it. One of the things that I have many times talked about to the Guam legislature, specifically when it comes this time of the year. It seems that we continue to reconvene here, talk about some of the challenges of the healthcare. And I have said many times, the federal government in 50 years had made only about three changes to their contractual federal employee health benefit plan. They do not go through the process of trial error here. You already have currently about 30% of the population being self-insured through the pharmacy and, and, and the dental together. And all they're doing is bringing the rest of it. Again, their concern of the providers, very well taken. On our side, yes, we have sent communications, we began to send some Q and A's. We are going to have that, the same provider briefing that the other company had last night. We will have that very soon, in October, we normally have it, we're going to expedite and have it in September. So we will try to answer the concerns and the, and the questions that the providers have. To us, the provider community is very important. And it's not only to us, the patient, the, the members, it has to be important. But we have talked not only to our providers here, but the providers of Island Cedars, Good Samaritan Hospital, CAKE, that has become a very well-visited hospital by the local community, the, the providers in the Philippines, and we haven't heard significant complaints, you know. GRMC is not here today. I don't think GMH is concerned with our payment patterns. So we will work on alleviating the concerns. But I think also it will help if the government of Guam is a little more consistent in the practices long-term in healthcare and that we don't change this so many times as we try. Thank you, Senator.
So Frank, you know, and, and I can't help but agree with you.
Thank you.
Wholeheartedly. The issue is, for whatever your opinion may be on this side of the aisle and this branch of government, with 15 of us haggling and hashing things out, the one thing power that we don't have is executive power. We cannot execute. I cannot go to Mr. Byrne's office and sit down with a cup of coffee in front of him and say, I'm not leaving until there's five signatures on this contract and I'll personally put it in my truck and take it over to Doug's office. That's the part we don't have. We don't have the ability to circulate it, we don't have the ability to make prompt payment because we don't cut checks here. We don't have the ability, all we have the ability is to answer the phone when, when Tanrosa calls us up and says, boy. So I would love to clean this up, I really would. Thing is, is we don't execute from this side. That's, that, that's so, we're gonna continue to try to be the best facilitator that we can be. But man, I tell you, maybe it's our fault sometimes when we campaign and we make sure people understand, we're gonna do everything that we can to get things done. Maybe we have to put a caveat to that, but we can't go down to the front office and, and run it because that's not our job.
Certainly, you're always welcome and we'll make sure the coffee's on.
That, I, if, if that need be, and, and, and I'll, I'll give it a shot, Frank. Maybe, maybe that's what we'll do, we'll take a bus down there and, and I'll get down and we'll all have a cup of coffee together. But, but yeah, execution is, is just something on this side of the aisle that's not in our prescription. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. And before I yield to the author of the legislation, I just want to thank my colleagues for being here and, and staying this late, it is after nine. And I did have one question that came to the committee and sharing it with the author of the legislation. I wanted to note to him that I should ask the question, I'm not expecting an answer right away. I don't want to put the director on the spot. But it said, should this bill pass? Or will this bill go through? Will there be any court proceedings based on the governor's approval of the insurance plan? And the reason why I wanted to share in as far as transparency was, I shared it with the author that this question has come in more than one time to the committee to ask because of the approvals done by the different representatives of the government of Guam. So, Mr. Byrne, if you want to take that back, if you want to say a comment on that, just know that I did speak to the author about this.
Madam Vice Speaker, I can't speak to the governor's approach to this. I haven't actually even discussed it with her. So I, I can't tell you, I was merely relating to a risk in, in passing this bill, a fiscal risk in passing this bill that was concerning me.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that it was noted to the record and it came through the committee. And with all transparency, I yielded it with the, the author of the legislation to make sure that, that this was the questions that came in. So Senator Blas, minority leader, I yield to you for your closing comments.
Thank you.
And then we'll adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues, and thank you for, you know, for being here. And I mean, she's right, with regard to the, to the question, you know, it's, it's in full transparency. So that everything is put up. Again, this is not an attempt to stonewall, you know, cut the train off the track or whatnot. This is making This is making sure that whatever we're gonna bid, that the community gets involved, that the community understands this. Frank, you're right, Mr. Campillo, you're right, you know, there has to be an all-out effort to be able to change the, you know, the image of the government of Guam. But as my colleague Senator Duñez stated, there's only so much that we can do on this side. Mr. Byrne, I, you know, as much as I look like I'm a probably, I'm a pest to him, and when I want to question, what I think I can appreciate is that he's right. You know, a lot of times, he gets blamed for non-payments, you know, to vendors, when he's in fact just waiting for an agency to turn in the bill. Okay? I've seen that a number of times, and I, you know, I don't blame him for that. But you know, at the same time, so, this has got to be a two-way street, as much as we need to improve the image of the government of Guam, the government of Guam is gonna need to want to improve its image itself in a lot of the things that it does. Okay? Far too long, you know, that, you know, Mr., the reason why I'm critical of him is because he happens to be the representative of the government in all facets. That's why I still buy him, you know, a drink the next time he and I are waiting for a car wash. But you know, that said, there is a couple of questions I need to ask, and thank you, Dr. Shea, because you brought up an interesting thing, and I need to relay this. This is with, okay, first off, I need to, the clarity here with regard to if this were to go through, okay, if this insurance plan were to be put in place. Mr. Byrne, you were quoted on August 11th by a Guam Daily Post article by John O'Connor, where it says, "The DOA Director Edward Byrne has publicly stated that GovGuam will not pay providers directly but will reimburse payments made by administrators." Mr. Campillo, is it Selectcare's understanding that you will make, you will have the coffers to make the payments and you get reimbursed by the government of Guam?
Sorry, Senator, we will cut the checks, and the funds will be obtained from the account that the government of Guam sets up.
Okay, but you know, the way it's written here, basically says, no, you will pay it first out of your coffers and then get reimbursed out of his.
Well, Senator, can I speak for how the reporter wrote that story? In fact, nowadays, I get reporters to email me stories, and I said, "I'll respond," so that way we don't get lost in translation, especially with my accent, so.
Okay, and that's the purpose of not just the hearing we had earlier, but the reason for this bill, okay? It's because there are a number of different questions, because it goes to the concern that Dr. Shea brought up with the Prompt Payment Act, okay? If that were the case, who's liable, who's responsibility, who's liable for the 12% that could be charged for not paying the bill after 45 days, the Prompt Payment Act?
It's an interesting question, and I think it's one that we still need to review as to what the language for that prompt payment reads.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I would, I think I will need to get Mr. Byrne to get a opinion on that.
So something that's still in the works, still in the works to be able to clarify, because I think that's an important part, especially for these guys, all right? Okay? You know, they need to encourage that the payment comes within 45 days, before 45 days, before the Prompt Payment Act has to be put in place. Secondly, Mr. Campillo, if someone makes a complaint, or somebody has a claim against the insurance company, you as an insurance agent, okay, what is the maximum amount that the person can claim against you?
Come again, Senator.
If a person was to make a claim against Cabo Selectcare, okay?
A claim on the health insurance policy?
Just a claim, period.
Okay.
What is the maximum amount the individual can be awarded against you?
Well, the maximum will be the amount of coverage in the benefits, okay? So some benefits have maximums, like the chiropractors and some other benefits, but if it is, for instance, a hospitalization, there is no limit on that.
Okay, so chances are, if the thing costs about $350,000, $400,000, that's the amount of the claim they can claim against you.
Well, typically, it takes a little bit of time to reach that, you know?
Understood.
And let's assume that a claim was incurred in October 1st. It will take, hospitalization, okay, to run $350,000, you gotta be about 30 days in the hospital, right? So it will take about another 30 to 45 days for that bill to be processed by the hospital, but the timing is to us, it will be from October 1st, it will be November.
I'm not talking to you as a TPA, okay? That's not, I'm talking, let's say that you have from one of your private sector clients, okay? The maximum, let's say that there's a claim that he had for $400,000, could he conceivably get awarded that $400,000 claim?
Well, it's not the individual, this is the provider.
I'm sorry, no, yeah, I understand.
Okay, so, again.
Yeah, you can, right?
If the provider bills $400,000, and that's the eligible fee, the eligible charge, nothing needs to be reviewed from that, that's conceivable what we will pay, yeah.
I'm not talking about a loss claim, I'm not talking about a medical claim, I'm talking about a judicial claim.
A judicial claim?
Yes.
Oh, that part, I cannot speak on that part, Senator, because that's a judicial issue, that's something that we need to get our lawyers in.
Yeah, but you see, at the same point, if that same client was a GovGuam employee, and he wanted to make, can he make that same claim? Or is there a limit to the claim that the government employee can provide based on this self-insure?
Theoretically, it's now insured by the government of Guam, that's the insurance company, so theoretically, it could be protected under the medical claims act, under the government claim sector, the government of Guam.
So, yeah, so then, so if he wanted to claim for about $450,000 less, the most he can claim was 200, right?
Well, are you talking about medical benefits?
I'm talking about a claim, about, let's say, you know, because that goes to another question that I need to have with regards to E and O. You know, earlier, you made a statement that GovGuam technically is covered by your E and O insurance. Does your provider know that?
Well, no, we said, okay, let me clarify that, Senator, very clear, okay? We are required to carry E and O insurance.
Just like I am, yes.
So if there was a complaint from the government, the government has a complaint, then theoretically, theoretically, if there is an award for the government, then the government will be made whole for that, by that complaint, by that bill, right? But it is not that the government is part of the insurance policy.
No.
We, us, the TPA, are protected, we're the ones that are carrying the errors and omissions.
As, TPA, and I understand, and it's as required, okay? But now the government of Guam, really, quite honestly, it doesn't extend to the government of Guam in as far as what your coverage is, right?
We, again, yeah, the government of Guam is not a party of our coverage, you know, they are requiring us to have that coverage.
Yeah, everything required, but at the same time, I think that with the government of Guam, because it's an insurance company, and you and I both know why we need errors and omissions.
Sure, but then theoretically, the government of Guam itself is covered under the government claim.
Government claim, yeah. Yeah, understood, but, okay, but you know, there's still some unanswered questions in that area. Okay, have you talked to your legal counsel with regards to the need for errors and omissions?
I've not discussed it with our counsel.
Okay, you know, and so there obviously is a lot of questions that still need to be asked and answered, okay? And really, I don't think that there's anybody here that's, there's no intent to be able to say that self-insurance is bad. I, as a matter of fact, I like the idea. I've done a lot of research with the guys, you know, I like the idea. It's just the ability to be able to make sure that our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. So, Mr. Byrne, I'm gonna ask you, is there any harm in being able to move this program back another year? Is there any harm?
Well, I think the answer must be yes. My, I read out some disadvantages in continuing the current coverage, and that's what I understand this bill would actually cause to happen. We don't have an alternative for the moment, so we would have to follow your bill, and it's just been pointed out to me that were we to follow this policy of continuing for 90 days and then starting up again with a new policy, the deductibles would start again, so that wouldn't be to the advantage of employees and retirees. We think that we've done sufficient work, the team, you know, who's been at it since February, reviewing all the parts of this, you know, I think the RFP went out in April with responses in May, and since that time, we've been refining this whole process so that we get the best result possible. We explained that without making this change, the likelihood was that we would have a higher cost increase, the premiums would cost more, and we're trying not to do that. So the damage, I think you're asking for, Senator, is there's a fiscal risk, and that fiscal risk seems to be, to me, to outweigh any other risk that I've heard so far.
Are you certain there's gonna be a fiscal risk?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
You can have a different one. The point, you know, the point about the public perception of all this, right, this is all very new, as I say, it's taken all this time to get to this point, because we've tried to dot the Is and cross the Ts. But I take the point, you know, we've started to make that process, the governor issued these frequently asked questions that I haven't read yet because I've been talking, but I will do so when I get home. So that point is taken, and we will work on that.
Okay, Frank, you want to say something?
No.
Okay, well, you know, it's interesting, because you talked about 90 days. Is there any fear, is there any harm in it being, you're moving this to another 90 days, so you can cross your Ts and dot your Is?
Well, the 90 days is only if the government invokes the HIPAA protections, which in this case, there will be questions as to whether the government needs to invoke those protections. It's not like the government is not moving to, it's not like the government is losing coverage.
I'm looking at all the options that could be available to us, you know, because one of the things that we have, obviously, there's a huge disconnect. This is a huge paradigm shift that you expect within the community.
So let me ask a question, Senator, if you don't mind. So the dental was self-insured two years ago, it was, is currently being self-insured by another company? The pharmacy is being self-insured? So what changed now? Would it be changed if another company had been awarded the?
No, I mean, Frank, please don't, don't think that this is a concern for the third-party administrator, I'm very confident. Frank, I've stayed with you, even if you, when you raised your age, you know, I don't want to say through the roof, but for lack of a better term, that's what you did, but you guys stay with you because I trusted you, okay? I trust in, I believe in your services, so it's got nothing to do with you. I think what this has got to do is the confidence of the community, and most importantly, the subscribers, the GovGuam employees, their dependents, and the retirees should have, okay? And then walking into it, making sure that they're able to go to the providers that they've been going to for a number of years. It's very difficult when you have to change providers midstream, okay, and he's been there for the last 30 years. And we need to be able to somehow address a lot of that stuff, okay? And so when, if there's questions that arise in this fashion, it's incumbent for us to be able to raise those questions and try to find the answers before it becomes, you know, for lack of a better term, too late. I don't want that to happen, okay? So please, don't take this as anything as far as, you know, questioning, you know, the third-party administrator, or questioning what you'd like to be able to do, is we got to be able to cross our Ts and dot our Is, okay? That's what we're here for, and what this bill proposes to do, it's not to say, "Don't do it," it's just move it over.
Yeah, so Senator, and I don't mean to say this for the sake of argument, but we passed self-insurance and enabled self-insurance like some 12 years ago, didn't we cross the Ts and dot the Is at that point?
Thank you for the interesting.
Like, so what were we doing there then?
Why, thank you for the interesting point.
Was it a mistake, or what?
Because you see, as much as it's been there for 12 years, we've only had this discussion actively in the last two, three weeks.
But if you go back to other items, as I said in my testimony, Senator, the government of Guam self-insures risk today that is riskier than this.
I understand.
You have premiums coming in, part of those premiums that the government of Guam is paying for are federal funds because of many of the federal agencies, you have a pool, the director already said there is going to be a reinsurance for others, like the typhoon, thanks God for our Uncle Sam that comes and rescues us. Hopefully, we never get a fire like we just got in Maui, that could be catastrophic as well. The utilities, hopefully, we don't lose the poles and the distribution and the lines, because those are also self-insured.
I understand.
The prison, the prison, the prison health insurance system that is being, that is self-insured, that at one point, somebody was talking about the hepatitis that could have been catastrophic for the government of Guam, you know, so there is other areas that the government of Guam is currently insured without a pool of premiums to rely on, and this has a pool of premiums that they rely on.
Speaking of pool of premiums, how much do we have in as far as the pool right now?
It has a pool that they will be able to tap, which are called the premium charges.
How much do we have in premiums? How much do we have in reserve?
Senator, we already answered that, the reserve will come from the premiums.
The reserve will come from the premiums. Frank, and then we, Mr. Campillo.
On COBA the first.
In your experience as being as a program administrator, and I'm sure that Selectcare has got some experience with regards to self-insurance for other companies, or you've learned about self-insurance.
We do self-insurance today, too.
Yeah, so what's the one thing that you'd like to be able to make sure that the company has when they start the program? What's the, obviously, you want to make sure that they have got the financial means to be able to do it, right?
And at the beginning of that, they don't have it either, because again, you know, you're charging the first month's premiums, and you can have that $400,000 claim that you just talked about as well with Company A or Company B that self-insures, no difference with them, you gotta build that pool, Senator.
Okay, and so, we're confident in being able to do that, as we stand right now. We have the confidence.
I'm confident we can help you build that trust that people have lost in GovGuam, and we will do everything possible to help you, Senator.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your concern, okay? Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you very much, Minority Leader. Ladies and gentlemen, there is no one else on the sign-up sheet to testify. I will note for the record that the information briefing and the public hearing on Bill Number 154-37 LS is introduced by Senator Frank Blas and Senator Christopher M. Duñez has been duly heard. Anyone else wishing to provide and submit written testimony can do so by sending it to Senator Munia Barnes at GuamLegislature.org, or they may hand-deliver it to our office at 163 Chalons Santo Papa, Hagaña, Guam 96910. We are in the Bank of Hawaii Building, the fourth floor. It is now 9:25.
Senator, can I just add one point before I forget? Just, less than a minute.
I will allow you, Senator, I mean, Dr. Shea.
Yeah, one thing I forgot is that to help improve the plan for your self-insurance is to remove your TPA, because right there, you save $35 million. And if you can save that, I don't understand why GovGuam can't just remove the TPA and just do it yourself, if self-insurance is that great. I don't think it's that hard to administer it, the $35 million right back into your pocket to pay for claim, that's one-third of your claims as estimated. So, you know, I do want the government of Guam to succeed, I do. I've been here for 27 years, I don't know how long I'm gonna be here, but I do want you to succeed, you know, even before I leave Guam, but not at the expense of the private sector, please.
Thank you, Dr. Shea.
All right.
It is now 9:27 PM. We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody, have a safe weekend, and please drive home safely. Sign Amazi in Sisusenbini DC.